Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 PM. It's August 23rd, 2016, and welcome to the City Council Meeting. And Councilman Williams, if you want to go ahead and recognize groups and individuals, the LTD, the ARMS, if you want to do that?
Okay. We have with us Sarah Jo Best, and she wants to speak to the council regarding reduction and syringe exchange program, and this time I'll turn it over to her.
This is Donnie Gill, who is a health educator with Lincoln Trail District Health Department. My name is Sarah Jo Best. I'm the Public Health Director for Lincoln Trail District Health Department. Lincoln Trail District Health Department is a regional public health agency covering Harvard, Larrivee, Marion B. Nelson, and Washington Counties. So those health departments that operate under us are the health departments in those communities. Before we get started, I wanted to just address a little bit about what public health does and why I'm here to talk to you about harm reduction and syringe exchange programs. So it's defined many different ways, but our main goals are to protect or guard from any health threat regardless of the source, educate and provide information that allows for healthy decisions, provide preventative care and avoid chronic disease and maintain health, and advance health addressing existing and emerging challenges. So public health is the science of preventing disease, prolonging life, and promoting health through organized efforts and informed choices as societies, organizations, public, private communities, and individuals. So a harm reduction syringe exchange program is just something I want to talk to you about tonight. It's just to begin the conversation. I'm not asking for a vote tonight, and we will not be asking for any funding or enforcement or anything like that from the council, but tonight's intent is just to begin the conversation. Kentucky Revise Statute 21180 identifies the function of the cabinet and regulations of certain health matters, and it basically gives us the authority and the responsibility of promoting, establishing, and executing policy plans and programs relating to all public health matters, including but not limited to detection, prevention, and control of communicable disease. And so when we talk about harm reduction, syringe exchange programs, the most important thing for you to know is that public health is coming at it from a disease prevention standpoint. This is not going to completely remedy the drug issues in our community. I like to think of it as a wagon wheel. There's a whole lot of spokes to that wagon wheel, and this one is the public health intervention piece, which aims at preventing disease outbreaks in our community associated with the use of interveners drugs. So it does not in any way, shape, or form replace things like education, promoting strong families, preventing drugs from coming into our community, and other mental health and behavioral health initiatives. It doesn't replace any of those. It complements those, and it's just something that aims at reducing disease and transmission. So there are comprehensive programs designed to provide safe disposal of needles for injection drug users, and so it gives them a place to get rid of those that does not involve our parks, our streets, things like that. We accommodate that. We get those, and we send them through the proper disposal like we would our syringes in our clinics that we use for immunizations. It does provide the opportunity for testing for bloodborne viral infections. It does provide rapid HIV and hepatitis C testing resources for those using injection drugs because we know that those individuals are at very high risk for acquiring those diseases and then spreading those diseases. And a lot of times they haven't been tested, and so they don't know whether or not they're positive for that. It does supply clean needles, and the aim of that is to prevent sharing of needles and reuse of needles, which then spreads disease. And it helps injection drug users find treatment and social services. So this is a program that they would visit weekly and have interaction with individuals such as a health educator and a certified drug and alcohol abuse counselor on a weekly basis. So if you're interested in bringing something like this to your community, how do you go about it? We are in the assessment phase. So we're in the phase where we see what's going on in our community. We monitor our statistics. We collect data. We talk to community partners. We've had meetings in all of those six counties that I've talked to you about. I've been going to fiscal court meetings, city council meetings, and beginning the conversation and seeing where we are with the need in our community. If we assess that we are ready, we do have an issue. This is something that we're interested in bringing to our community. The next step would be to take this initiative to the Governing Board of Health, which is comprised of members from each one of those six counties are represented, and it's by population. So there's Nelson County individuals on that governing board of health. They would have to pass it first. Should it pass the Governing Board of Health, then it would have to go through fiscal court and city councils where the program would be operating. So eventually, if that passed, and that was something that we were going to try to get in the city of Bardstown, it would come back to you for a vote at that time. So the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Kentucky passed Senate Bill 192 in the 2015 Regular Session. It basically says that local health departments give us the ability to operate substance abuse treatment outreach programs, which allow participants to exchange hypodermic needles and syringes with consent of the local Board of Health and the legislative body of city and county in which the program would operate. And so that's what that step process would be. The next slide, Slide 4, that you have on your presentation, I just wanted to let you know where Kentucky is. And so I am a member of the Kentucky Health Department Association. It's basically made up of health department directors across the Commonwealth of Kentucky. There are 61 local health departments in Kentucky. They did a survey last January, and I thought that it was very interesting, that basically 74 counties in Kentucky are actively engaged some step of the process. So they're either in the assessment phase, and I told you we were in, or they're in the process where they're actually taking it to get it voted on, or they've passed it and they're operating an exchange program. So they're actively engaged in some process there. Thirty-four counties were not currently promoting syringe exchange at that time, but 11 of those did plan on promoting it in the future. They just weren't yet in January. And so I thought what was interesting about this, among the 108 counties that responded to the survey, that only 24 had no intentions of ever discussing this. And so I thought that was very telling about where Kentucky was. There are 12 harm reduction syringe exchange programs operating currently in Kentucky. Jefferson, Fayette, Pendleton, Carter, Grant, Jasmine, Franklin, Knox, Boyd, Clark, Harrison, and Kenton are currently operating an exchange, and more are coming on board every day or through the process. We get email updates, you know, our board health passed it. Now we're going to fiscal court. Fiscal court passed it. Now we're going here. So lots of activity around that in Kentucky. So some of the myths, and they're talking about what they don't do, and I'll be really honest with you, when I first, if you, I've been in public health for 15 years, and if you had come to me 12 years ago and told me that I would be standing in front of people advocating for a syringe exchange program, I would have told you that you were crazy. No way. Won't ever happen. Wouldn't have believed it. And when I first was exposed to syringe exchange, I was opposed to it. But the more that I've learned and the more that I've researched, and the more I understand what it accomplishes and how the myths that I too thought were true or not true, now here I am. Many scientific studies, including a surgeon general's report, show that syringe exchange programs do not increase drug use when conducted with referrals to both drug treatment and HIV and hepatitis C testing, medical care and support services, which is what we would be operating. Those are evidence-based programs, and so what that means is that they've been studied and they've been proven effective over time if you have those components to them. Syringe exchange access programs have operated in the United States since the 1980s, so we have, there's ample time to conduct research and identify trends. In 2013, which is the latest data I can find, there are 211 programs operating in 32 states, DC, Puerto Rico, and Indian Nations. Researchers at the National Institute of Health and General Accounting Office at the CDC, the National Academy of Sciences, concur that syringe access programs are an effective public health approach in reducing HIV and viral hepatitis infections in communities. Syringe access programs have been supported as a harm reduction strategy by many health and governmental organizations, including CDC, the American Medical Association, the American Public Health Association, the American Pharmaceutical Association, the American Psychiatric Association, the American Bar Association, and the U.S. Conference of Mayors. So time has told the story. Benefits of having the harm reduction syringe exchange program. One, they provide healthcare access that otherwise may not be obtainable to those who are currently using injectable drugs. Provides testing for HIV, hepatitis C. Can include referral for testing and sexually transmitted infections, pregnancy testing. We'll talk about a little bit vaccinations, overdose prevention, things like naloxone, enrollment and healthcare coverage. If they allowed those coverages to lapse, and that's the barrier to treatment, counseling and education, and other health department services and referrals, and tax savings. And we'll talk about that. The next slide has a lot of research on it, and basically what I wanted you to see is the cost effectiveness of doing something like this. And when we say savings of tax dollars, what we mean by that is syringe exchange programs have been proven to prevent the spread of HIV, hepatitis C, and other bloodborne diseases. When we prevent, we always save money rather than letting things happen and then having to treat. So the cost of providing hepatitis C treatment ranges from $84,000 to $300,000 per person. If left untreated, it can also progress into cirrhosis, liver cancer, and liver failure, and require liver transplant, which is estimated at costing about $600,000 for an individual. The cost of preventing drug-related infections is 150 times more efficient than the cost of treating the disease that's spread by infected syringes. For every dollar spent on syringe access program, three to seven dollars is saved on the costs associated with HIV infection treatment. The next slide talks about one of our most vulnerable populations. We are seeing an increase in babies born addicted to drugs and opioids, which is what we're concerned with a lot with the injectable drugs or heroin. These programs do provide access to care, pregnancy testing, so they can see if they are pregnant, and education and counseling on the effects of the child. It also can determine whether they have HIV, which they can receive medication to prevent the spread of that from mother to fetus. The next slide talks about reduction and risky behaviors. That's another thing that we've been able to see with studies. So they show that some harm reduction syringe exchange programs not only increase the likelihood of individuals seeking treatment, but also decrease risky behaviors associated with IV drug use prior to obtaining treatment. So they meet people where they are in the stages of change. If anybody's ever had to study the stages of change, sometimes people are pre-contemplating, so they're not even thinking about change right now. Then they might transition into, well, I'm thinking about a change, but I don't really know how to make it happen. And then they might move into where they actually have a plan of action of how they're going to change. This program literally meets them at each one of those stages and provides the care and services they need at each stage. A five-year study trend, that's the top one, and you could read that. They also teach self-care, so things that prevent hospitalizations and comorbidities in our hospitals and healthcare settings, things like cellulitis, collapsed veins, abscesses, things like that. On average, if you have co-comorbidities, so you have maybe cellulitis and you have a drug issue, your hospital stay is going to be about three to five days longer than a normal, somebody that doesn't have a co-comorbidities, is what I should say. Nelson County data, this is what Donnie passed out for you, and so I think that this is important to look at. Kentucky leads the nation in acute hepatitis C rates, and that's why you're seeing so much movement around harm reduction, syringe exchange programs, is because we know we have a drug issue in Kentucky, or have overdose issue in Kentucky, and we have hepatitis C issues in Kentucky. And so those three things are very risky. The Kentucky rate doubled from 2010 to 2013. In fact, Kentucky has the highest rate of hepatitis C at any state in the country at 4.1 per 100,000 people. That's six times the national average. And that's data as recent as June of 2015. Half of all acute hepatitis C cases in 2014 in Kentucky were in the age group of 21 to 30. That also tells us a lot about how they're acquiring it, and IV drug use was the main risk factor there. Looking at Nelson County, all drug-related inpatient hospital discharges and ER visits have increased, with the exception of antidepressants, and a particular concern is the increase due to heroin. When looking at HIV rates, Kentucky Department for Public Health has Lincoln Trail District area, the area development district, so those eight counties that make up the ad district ranked number four in the states for residents diagnosed with HIV from 2004 to 2014. And when we look at all the counties within our service area, those six counties that I named, we're most concerned Nelson and Harden due to trends of disease and healthcare utilization that involve drug use. We do study, you know, Global Metro has implemented a syringe exchange program. We have been there, and they work very closely with us. They are monitoring zip codes, and what I wanted you to see in the next slide was that people within our service area are already accessing syringe exchange programs. The last slide is a potential for outbreak and some type of health leaves of prevention, and that's one of our main strategies. So if it's not here yet, what do we do to prevent it from getting here? A preliminary report by the Federal Centers for Disease Control Prevention has identified 220 counties in the United States as being vulnerable to outbreaks of HIV and hepatitis C, and when those who inject drugs in those communities, and 54 of those counties are in Kentucky. Nelson County's not on that list, but if you'll look, we're not too far away from counties that are, and diseases really don't care about county lines. Most are in Appalachia, but the list does include non-Appalachian counties such as Hickman, Breckle Ridge, Grayson, Allen, Taylor, Boyle, Mercer, Carroll, Gallantown, Grant, and Campbell Counties. Again, we lead the nation in hepatitis C, so we know that that's trending. We also know that we haven't been doing a lot of testing, so we expect those rates to increase as testing becomes more available. Questions for me?
I have one. When we had our, when I met with you about a week ago, one of the concerns we had talked about in council meetings was when our garbage tippers are, you know, taking up garbage, they're finding needles and so forth, and you were telling me how long a syringe is infected?
Hepatitis C can live in a syringe up to 60 days, just in our environment. And so that puts everybody at risk when needles are being discarded in our communities, and that's, you know, that's our entire population. That's the people that play in our parks, that walk on our streets, that pick up our garbage, that first responders, you name it. That puts everybody at risk when they're disposed of improperly.
Yes, so apparently there's a robust medical group associated with this. If you're doing this medical testing, you're providing, so if someone comes in to give us a syringe exchange, then this other health benefits are available right then?
It's a community approach, and so what it would involve, it actually is not a huge staff. It's a health educator that is that first point of access, which is, at this time, is Donnie would be providing that role. They can do a rapid HIV test and a rapid hepatitis C test, which isn't, it would require more testing, but because we know we may not see those individuals again, it does provide preliminary results, and they can initiate the conversation, but then they move to a certified alcohol and drug abuse counselor is actually the next professional that they see that counsels them on self-care.
Right there.
Mm-hmm, right there. And it's a two-step process. We are working with community care at this point, and they have committed that they would go in partnership with us on this initiative, and so they would assist us in helping getting treatment and referrals into treatment. So we are trying to build kind of that team approach, though, because it takes an entire community. We may identify other needs, such as signing them up, re-enrolling them in Medicaid if they let that lapse, those types of issues that may prevent them from getting the care that they need. The other thing I wanted to share with you really quick is we are in our phase, we do a community health assessment every five years. The health department's required to do that, and that helps guide what we do in our community health improvement plan. Our end date on our surveys is not till September 30th, and so I would encourage anybody that wants to take that survey, you can go to our website and do that. But right now, 116 Nelson County residents have done that survey, and 67% of that 116 have identified drug abuse as one of the top three health problems in their community. So I think that's telling, too, that Nelson County residents are, this is one of their top concerns right now. Any other questions? Thank you very, very much. You wanted to come out and talk. I appreciate it.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Boy Scout Troop 147 that's attending, so I appreciate that guy for attending. Let's move on to receive. Receive input from the public. So it's the pin, if you'd like to come up, is the Airbnb lodgings within the city. If you don't, guys don't know what that is, it's the Airbnb breakfast, and they're like one or two night hotel, motel rooms, and I have been working with Jan on this for several weeks, so I'll be having something to come to you when I get it together.
Right. Well, thank you for your time. I know you have a very long agenda, so I'm going to try to keep it short, but we'll keep it short for you. I did want to state at the beginning that I'm here not for preservation or representing the HRP, just as a property owning taxpayer. What I'm here for is to address an issue that is relatively new and that impacts residential neighborhoods throughout the city. And this is the establishment and growth of short-term rentals through online services such as Airbnb and VRBO in single-family residences and townhouses. This has become an issue around the whole country that is receiving close attention in large cities and in small towns like ours that are tourist destinations. There were two of these in operation in summer of last year. There are now eight, and for sure, there will be many more by this time next year. These do not count those that are already established in the central business district. I think there'd be two that do not require a conditional use permit to operate, and of course, they have to have a license and pay their taxes, but they don't. Because of being a business district, the use of a business property can include lodging, apparently. When you add these eight that we now have of the short-term rentals, and add them to the six existing bed and breakfasts or short-term rentals that have been established some time ago, so you've got obviously then 14 single-family houses and townhouses located in all areas of the city. So every area, you know, Edgewood's got a couple, Maple Hills got one. Each of the areas, neighborhoods has at least one, if not more. Short-term rentals are an imaginative way to attract visitors to our city, and it's a good thing. So the activities and public relations efforts, hard work by Ken Houston, Dawn, and everybody else in the city is paying off and attracting more people here. And it's well-known that we have a lodging problem that is gradually being solved. But as more and more people are attracted, you have more and more people going to these online services like Airbnb, which is basically the biggest one, and using them. And there are issues with them that need to be addressed and addressed quickly. And first of, the issue that I see is how they are established. Many of them around the country, including some here in the city, have been established, as people like to say, under the radar, which is the nice euphemism for being illegal. Illegal because they may not have a conditional use permit, which if you are a single-family house in a residential district, you need one. You may not have a business license, you may not be paying the 1% transient room tax to the state, or the 3% room tax that goes to tourism, much less your 6% sales tax. That's 10% taxes that are loaded onto any overnight stay. That's lost income, for one thing.
And we've gone past three months. You need to ask the council for a little bit more.
I could ask for about two or three more, and that would be it?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. So you've got lost income to the city, lost income to tourism, lost income to the state revenue cabinet. The other flip side is that it's also very unfair and creates a playing field as anything but level when you have established short-term rentals that have gone through all the hoops, paying all the fees, paying all their taxes. They're at a disadvantage if someone comes in and rents out their house or part of their house, and they're not paying their taxes, they don't have a business license, haven't paid a conditional use fee, and so they can undercut established businesses. Part of that is a free market problem, but basically I look at it as a legal problem that needs to be solved right away. And the remedy that I see, and many other cities are dealing with this issue of illegality, and many of them face this issue by enacting regulations, and I'd like to have the city address the problem quickly by, first of all, tracking all the short-term rentals like this in the city. And by enacting measures to deter illegal establishment of them through cease and desist orders if they're found to be operating illegally. They shouldn't be allowed to operate until they're brought into compliance, just by the fact you wouldn't let that happen with somebody's liquor store opening up or something like that, or something that was even more illegal than that. And also by fines, and also to ensure that all the back fees and taxes are paid. And you can also deter that by having sizable but reasonable fees to obtain a conditional use permit. The rule charges $1,000. We charge like $180-some dollars.
But if I can add to that, then is that we have a major safety issue. Some of these places that I've been staying in may not meet fire code or have proper fire protection. So we have an issue that really needs to be looked at from a safety standpoint.
Okay, very quickly, the other issue, besides how they're established, is a growth issue, and the other part of that is a density issue in residential neighborhoods. And mind you, I'm only talking about single-family houses. I'm not talking about the business area. So if you have, we now have, what did I say, 14 of these scattered throughout the city, but there are two of them only with only, within only a block of each other on North Fifth Street and on East John Fitch. There's an existing one, and there's one that just opened this month that's right next door to it. And the problem comes with that is that you have a saturation of a residential district neighborhood with short-term rentals, transient guests. You don't know who's coming and going, safety issues, like you mentioned there. You also have absentee owners. They don't live there for the most part, or their managers don't live there. And you have associated possible problems of noise, parking events, parties, and that kind of thing that are legal because they're not legal and they're not monitored. And you also have, of course, along with the safety issue, there's more people than would be normally allowed in the size of building that it is. And further down the road, as this increases by next summer, we'll go from 14 to 20, 25. Where are they going to go? Because as you have these scattered throughout the city, where is the next one that's going to make its door like we have on John Fitch Avenue? Does it go only a block away? So you're very quickly going to approach a density problem. The other part of that is it also drives after affordable housing. So when you have small, affordable houses, either for rental or for purchase, they're taken off the market by short-term rentals. And that is a big issue, not only here but around the country. So I do thank you for your time and listen to me express concerns that I have. Thanks.
Jan and I have been talking about this for some time, so we're in the process. Tim is going to, I think she's making contact with you, or she's going to get something together. I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed. So as soon as, I guess, Jan and I and Tim get together and get this lined up, we'll bring something to you. You have any other questions about it? Feel free to call my office and come see me. Let's move Let's go to bids, contracts, proposals. It's the 2016 street resourcing bid. I hope each member wanted to have a chance to go look at the streets and roads. Larry, if you need to address any of those, council has any questions?
I went outside the bid. It's $66.15. Last year, $71, so we got a scratch of $3. a little credit.
Saving those dollars.
Mayor, if we need a motion, I'll make a motion, we accept the bid tab on the 2016 street resurfacing for mega construction. Second, second by councilman Lee.
Discussion? Guess they were the only bidder?
Yes.
You know, it's hard for, you have a company on Louisville to have to haul it, and it has to maintain a certain heat, correct me if I'm wrong, but it has to maintain a certain heat to be laid by specs. So it'd be hard to haul it from Louisville or Lexington and get us a really mega, mega's your only shot. And that's the reason why. I had first and second discussion, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion's adopted, thank you. Let's go down to HRP, DRB, and planning zoning recommendations, and we have a lot of them.
Number one, COA 1655, Wonderyne applicant owner proposes to remove trees and replace them at 211 East Plage. Recommendation approval of landscape plan with proposed condition. The applicant seeks approval from the preservation coordinator once the tree species is decided. Height and dimension must also be assessed. 1660, excuse me, 1659, Mary Carey applicant owner proposes to paint a mural at the rear of 116 North Third Street. Recommendation approval to paint the mural with the proposed design and size. COA 1661, Caitlin Ballard owner applicant proposes to paint the existing fence at 115 East Broadway Street. Recommendation approval to paint the fence a cream color. COA 1664, Karen Brewer applicant, C. Paul McCoy owner, proposed to update the signage and paint the front of the store at 208 North Third Street. Recommendation approval of the new signage and to paint the front of the store. COA 1665, Vance and Cheryl Marqueith applicant owners propose to remove the existing sidewalks and replace with a new design at 415 North Third Street. Recommendation approval to remove the sidewalks and replace them with proposed design and color. COA 1667, Eric Cecil applicant, Paul McCoy owner, proposed to add new signage at 210 North Third Street. Approval of the new signage and the A-frame sign. COA 1668, Tom Durbin applicant, Ms. Hurst owner, proposed to add a screened-in porch to the rear of 104 East Broadway Street. Recommendation approval to construct the screened-in porch at the rear of the property. COA 1671, Buddy Golden applicant, Pyke Conway owner, proposed to add a temporary tent to the rear of 226 North Third Street. Recommendation approval to install the temporary tent at the rear of the property with the following condition. Condition, the canopy would be in place from the city council meeting on August 23rd through October 31st of this year. It will be renewable in 2017 for six months. COA 1673, Jim Kelly applicant owner, proposes to paint the west-facing wall and install signage at 101-103 West Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation approval to paint the wall and install her proposed signage. Now for the remaining COAs, all submitted by Mr. and Mrs. Lance Blanford, I'll identify the COA and then start with the recommendations and approvals. So for COA 1674, they proposed to remove a tree at the rear of 402 North Third Street. That recommendation approval to remove the tree at the rear of the property. Amendment, once the contractors start to do the work on the foundation and they are finding more issues, they will contact the preservation coordinator for approval to remove the tree. Another proposal to remove a tree at the front of 402 North Third Street. Recommendation approval to remove the tree at the front of the property. A recommendation, excuse me, a proposal to paint the concrete and wood fence white at, again, 402 North Third Street. Recommendation approval to paint both the concrete and wood fence white. Amendment, the brick will be painted white to match the trim of the home, and the stucco fence will be painted the same color as the house. The wood fence in the backyard will be painted white. The applicants also proposed to paint the front block, front door block at 402 North Third, and a recommendation was approval to paint the front door block. Last on COA 1678 for 402 North Third Street, they proposed to add a glass storm door. The recommendation approval to add a glass door to the front of the property with a condition, the final design of the storm door would be approved by the preservation coordinator. Last COAs, 1683 for Mr. and Mrs. Lance Blanford, for to propose to add lava rock landscaping, and the recommendation approval to add the lava rock landscaping.
No, we have to have those motions.
I need a motion for this.
At a time in order, I'd like to make a motion that we approve COA 1655, 61, 64, 59, 65, 67, 68, 71, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 83, with the stipulation set forth. And I yield the floor for a second.
Councilman Sips in the second one. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
I only got a question on a couple of them. The mural, is there any stipulation on maintenance? If that building sold, traded, is it gonna be deteriorated?
I'm not sure. Do the minutes reflect it?
1659. No other buildings have murals, and they have to be maintained. I've seen other older cities that have murals, they not maintain, they look worse than if they'd been left alone. And then on 1674, I looked at those trees, 75 of the three needs to go. It won't change the look coming down through town, that tree being gone won't change it. But the one in the back, I feel will. It's a healthy tree, and sorry, you should have brought it in the backyard, but it's a nice, healthy tree, and I think it changes the contour of the image of the main street.
You're talking about the one in the front?
The one in front can leave. It's got the three maples in front, it wouldn't change the outlook coming downtown. The one in the back, I think, would. And it's healthy. One in the front, it's worn out. It needs to go. And you can't even see it for the other three maples, but the one in the back.
But if you look at the one in the front, it is lost.
Oh, yeah, it's useless. It's actually restraining the other maple from, it's shifting it out of the road like it did at Booker's, actually, you know it'd be in the road. So it may pull it back, if you remove it, pull it back straight.
Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but we vote against the recommendation of the historic review board, we have to cite the page and paragraph.
Well, you have to have justification, which would be most appropriately citing the criteria that where it would violate the criteria.
Yes.
And the standard, if you would.
With the maintenance, with the maintenance of the mural, since that's not added, I mean, do you?
All I'm asking is, if we're going to vote against something, I would rather have the historic review board, the historic guidelines in front of us, where we can quote a page and paragraph, what we think.
That's what we would have to file.
And if I read this correctly, it says amendment, the tree will remain, however, once contractors start to do work on the foundation. And if they find issues with the tree, such as it leaning or dying, they will contact the preservation coordinator for approval to remove the tree at night. So it sounds like to me that it's to stay unless there's some issues, they find issue with the tree or the health of the tree. The one in the back, is what I'm reading.
Yes, yes.
I think though, but she can do that by in-house approval.
This is, this is 74, COA 1674, which is, propose to remove the tree at the rear of 402 North Third Street. And that's the one that says amendment, tree will remain, however, once contractors start to do work on the foundation. And if they find issues with the tree, such as it leaning or dying, they will contact the preservation coordinator for approval to remove the tree. So I think that they're not necessarily, I think that, I mean, that's pretty obvious.
And in regard to the mural, it's under the, it also falls under the sign ordinance. So of course, maintenance of any sign has to be preserved each and every time. It'll fall under that as well.
So I would say, it'd be safe to say, if the mural is left to disintegrate and be unsightly, it could go through the code enforcement board, and they can cite it under the enforcement board of the, like, signing sheet.
That's my concern about it.
Do we have any discussion, sorry?
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Those opposed? Okay, motion's adopted. Correspondence, donation request, Barstown Main Street program. If y'all, if you clicked on that and read that, Councilman Buckman?
Uh, Main Street, the application's in the same guidelines as the one we approved previously, is a nonprofit that was for the betterment of the community, and we're looking for additional funding for the security and crowd patrol and police and fire hiring, which would fall under the same guidelines as the previous approval that the council approved.
Was this, is this approval for reimbursement for this year's?
I think so.
Is that how we've done in the past, is do it afterwards? Just thinking, if we get the request next year for next year's, in this fiscal year, suppose we would be doing two in one year?
And no, we have not done it after the fact. It's always been prior to the event.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So if we do this one now, for this, if we do it in this fiscal year for this year's event, then next year, if the request is made prior to the event, it'll be in this fiscal year again, so we'll be doing two in the same year. That's just something, something for us to be aware of. I'm not against doing that, I'm just thinking about the timing. I would rather have done it ahead of time. Obviously, they've already spent this money, they've already.
They're an nonprofit, and they'd like to recover the money. We set the precedence.
Well, I think that normally they put in, well, normally they ask for a donation from the city. I think, what, 2,500? And because of everything that was going on, they didn't put an application in. But it would have been done, and they wouldn't have had to do this. So.
We did, we did provide some money for Main Street, for the concert, didn't we?
That was last year.
Yeah, last year, not this year. We didn't give you $5,000 this year?
That, that $5,000 is local contribution. The separate, 2,500 was always separate for the actual contribution for Main, for the street concert. There was two separate contributions. One was for local contributions, which goes, that particularly goes towards not only Main Street itself, but also South Atlantic as well. And that comes also from the county and tourism. And then in addition to that, the street concert, the tourism always gave 2,500, and the city also matched that with 2,500 as well.
So you guys, I need a, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the donation request, $1,000. And I yield the floor for a second.
Second by Councilman Copeland. Okay, all in favor?
Can you go?
I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is it coming out of the contingency, or what's it coming out of?
Contingency, contingency, I apologize.
As you were.
Yeah, because we need budget board. But, all right, so we, all in favor, those opposed?
Nope.
Motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everybody have a, have time to review, review the minutes of eight, nine, 2016. If there's nothing there, I'll adopt a motion to approve by unanimous consent. Thank you. Financial report, there's none. Let's do the ordinance, first reading, B 2016 zoning regulation amendment, B 5.
Roland, would you be surprised if we introduce Captain Forrest, please?
Mayor, I would like to introduce proposed ordinance B 2016 zoning regulation amendments B 5, and ask for its summary to be read.
Summary of ordinance B 2016 zoning regulation amendments for B 5. This ordinance amends the zoning regulations for section 6.15E to incorporate open space and setback allowances as previously allowed in B 5 zoning under previous regulations and inadvertently omitted during reformatting. This ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication in summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, city attorney.
So when it was reformatting, meaning whatever they reprinted, they just reprinted it, mom?
Yes.
So we have to pass an ordinance to?
I think what it was, is they adopted a new version that did not have it in there. So when they adopted a new version that did not, and we did.
Yeah. Okay, so we actually adopted the wrong version.
But it was submitted to, Captain.
That's what I thought. Well, that'd be in the case.
It's only a first reading. But if there's any discussion.
Further discussion on that? Move on. All right, B 2016-10, classification?
No, occupational license.
The occupation, I've had one.
It's just for discussion for right now.
The occupational license fee, which is .75 or 1%. We're open for discussion if y'all want to discuss it.
I'll go first.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Of course, the last time we talked about this, there was, we were two, two and two. And I would, you all have this sheet, and all the other cities in Kentucky, and their rates. And I was thinking that they were all in .25 percentages. But in a discussion with Jim, he reminded me that it's, there's some that are not. For instance, Louisville has 1.45%. Bowling Green has 1.85%. Owensboro has 1.33%. And Hopkinsville has 1.95%. E-Town has 1.35%. So there's some that are oddball, if you will. And I'm gonna offer a compromise. The .75, I think, is just enough. I think 1's too much. I would, I would throw out something in between. I know that sounds, you know, that we could compromise on, like a .9%. I know it's kind of something we haven't talked about before, but does anybody even, does anybody even like to discuss that possibility? Something besides .75, or something besides 1, something that's in between. Other cities have done it.
Could run in an auctioneer, we could have got this one.
It's a question.
It is. It's a question worth discussing. I agree with you, Chris.
I take the silence to be noted.
What does the .9 give us?
I didn't do the math, but it's, .75 is an additional 1.1 million. The 1% is another 1.1 million. So you, it's, so, you know, I said, I didn't, so you're talking about about a 500. So it'd be about 6, 1.6 million additional. I didn't, I didn't do the math. It would be somewhere between the 1.1 and the 2.2. If you went halfway, you're talking about, like I said, another 1.6.
I think you said it pretty close right there. It's just enough. And I'm gonna have to, it's just enough, we're going to revisit this program again. Next year, whoever's sitting here is gonna have to revisit us again. Because we can't, we'd have to come from somewhere, and we're gonna keep the same services unless we cut the budget. And I don't know what we're gonna cut, but whoever's sitting here is gonna have a hard road to hold next trip. I say do the 1%, we should have done it last year, we didn't. Now, now we're, our pitch to the fire, we need to do the 1% and get it over with.
Okay, I was gonna say.
It'll be cheaper than everybody else in our account. It'll be cheaper than everybody else in our account.
I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
I'm still at the .75, and I'm gonna stay conservative. I am reasonably certain, even though I'm not a financial guru, that, that is going to take care of what we need to do. And I'll say this facetiously, if we're really trying to solve a problem, just go to 2.0, then we'll have plenty more. And I don't mean that.
I think they got that, though.
I'm at the .75, that's why.
Fred?
Well, I've said my piece. Kish, what do you think?
Well, I'm at 1.0. I said this, that you are putting a Band-Aid on this. If you're going to do the right thing, it is gonna be the 1%. And, and the reason is because truly, we didn't, we didn't do our job last year when we did some budgeting and approved some things. And now, we're, you know, we're sitting, gonna be sitting at a shortfall. And there's no way that you can do it as a little sticker and think that you're gonna stop leaving. I understand, you know, this has been going on for 12 years. We are the lowest, almost the lowest in the state of Kentucky. No one wants to raise taxes. But, once again, if we explain what's going on, our budget, the only right way to go is to do the 1%. And I truly do not want to do that, but also, other revenue streams. We can't operate on a shortfall. We, we, and it's not fair to the next council that comes in to do something that we should've done. To say that you will not raise taxes is not something you should take lightly. We, we have a job to do. And that job is to make sure that the city continues to run. And that, that's part of being a city council. The mayor said several times, you know, "Council, you approved it, now you have to fund it." You know, we, 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 we made some mistakes, and now we're looking at one another, how are we gonna find this money? So, I, I just hope that everyone thinks about this. Once again, I really think that, you know, we, we should really inform and educate the public on what's going on, our budget, and, and do the right thing.
Can I have Mr. Liedens, and then come back to you, Fred?
Sure.
Okay. Just to get everybody's first opinion, then we'll come back to you. Thank you, sir. Go ahead. Yes, sir, you're ready.
Well, my comment, I voted against creating this big expense. You councilmember voted to create this expense. You put the heart before the heart. And you know my opinion, the reason why I was against it. It's not that I'm against full-time fire department. In my opinion, we were gonna need a full-time fire department, but it should've been planned out. You do not go jump in the deepest part of the water when you could've walked in the shallow water, and you walked, you jumped in a deeper part of the water, then you paint, you cannot swim, and you ask someone to get you out. So, you know my opinion.
Set Z, right there.
Well, I voted against creating this expense. Y'all voted for fun expense, y'all figured it out.
Councilman Hagan? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Simpson.
Well, I just don't think this was done really.
Okay, I didn't see Mr. Simpson, Mr. Simpson. Go ahead.
Well, I think I've said the last two or three meetings we've talked about this way out there, and I'm about to read the one of the three. And I really don't care what Danville, Bowling Green, Louisville, all these other places are paying. That shouldn't interrupt our meeting. We, in franchise, we passed a budget, or the best, but the budget was passed without, in my opinion, as I've said before, we needed to dig deeper into the budget. The thing we've got to do is manage what you have. We're gonna raise occupational tax this time. Everybody, somebody said the last meeting that we didn't, we haven't raised taxes. Yes, taxes have been raised. They were occupational tax, caps come off, caps come off the bottom. We were gonna look at those afterwards. We sat here and discussed that for a long time. The councilmen that's sitting here, no, we didn't. It was pretty much consensus, we're just gonna look at that the next year, whether we would leave it on or take it off. Well, we left it on. Another $600,000 come in. Now, in my opinion, what we're gonna do, if it's two, two million you're talking about, next year would be maybe two years later, we're gonna be looking at another tax, because we overspent back here. The main thing is, is control your spending. Now, a lot of it has been talked about, that we haven't, haven't been doing the things we should do for infrastructure. Tell me one thing that has come to this council that we did not approve to be done in upgrades, and things that different departments needed? We've done it. Now, and I think we can continue to do that, and so, until we get the, the management of it intact, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm against it. Either one of the three.
Mr. Hagan?
Well, I've said before, I think we need to do one or the other, and I'm, I'm willing to compromise, and if, if the, the two are stuck on the 1%, or stuck on it, I'm willing to go to the 1%, because we have to do something. So, I'm going to, to go there. In which case, we could have a first reading.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is not to defame anyone, but upgrades take money. And when we're talking about raising taxes, we're talking about the rate or the percentage of the taxes that are raised. And, and that has not been done. That is a very truthful statement. If you're talking about the cap, that was something that we did to analyze where we were gonna be, per se, and still your word. So, we came back again and saw that this year, you know, we, we needed to do something. I, I truly believe that the city of Barstown residents see that something has to be done. I, I do not see how we can go forward and not do anything, and, and look two years ahead and say, huh, oh, my gosh, what are we gonna do? By then, it's too late. It's, it's gonna be too late. I mean, if we sit back and do nothing, what is the plan? That's all I'm asking. If we sit back and do nothing, I understand, stop spending, I understand that. But if you want projects done, we, we have to spend money. If we wanna retain the people that we have in the administration, we have to do what we have to do to maintain that budget and make sure that we're surviving. I, I haven't heard any solutions. If you're not going to vote for a tax, how are we going to survive? How are we going to maintain? What are we gonna do? Because no one has come in here with a budget and cut anything. We've been talking about this for three weeks. And no one's come in with a budget and, and said, "We can cut this or cut that."
We passed the budget. If you wanted to cut them, you should've cut them in. But you didn't. So, now we gotta pay for it. And we've done robbed the utility funds, and we can't rob it no more. And you were right, we need to work on the infrastructure, and y'all did build the infrastructure, but you built it out of utility funds, out of money that was used for that, and now it's gone. And if we're gonna keep the projects up, and keep building the city, and we gotta furnish services, these industries coming in, these factories coming in, we've gotta grow with it. And it's, it's gonna take more water sources, it's gonna take our electrical services, you gotta keep electricity and stuff going. And they're not gonna do it on a half a percent tax. Now, bite the bullet, go to 1%, and let's move it. The city's growing. It's, it's not the old days anymore, it's growing.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Councilman Buckman?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna elaborate, add to what Councilman Simpson indicated. I don't like to go back to the past, but I'm going back to the past. The year 2013 and 2014, we did not transfer but $400,000 out of combine utility. That's $400,000 in, in two years. In two, three years, we had a surplus of $1 million. We put it back in combine utility, and we have spent millions, millions of dollars. What Councilman Simpson, I mean, Councilman indicated, it has not been related. We have spent big money, millions of dollars, but we was able to utilize it and study and research it, without jumping in the water, in deep water, when you could jump in shallow water and walk, walk out of shallow water. And we was able to put money back into combine utility when we had big expenses that we had to spend out. I mean, go through the books. Bobby Simpson named some of them, he didn't name all, but if he named the rest of them, we spent millions and millions of dollars, you know that? And we was able to put it back in.
Well, it's something that needs to be, you councilmembers need to be looked at. And I, you keep referring to this fire department issue, and I don't know why Kish brought it to the devil's horse, so we're gonna, we're dragging that horse back to the mud again. I don't know why either, but it happens. And I don't know why it's brought up every meeting, Fred, I really don't. But the thing about it is, is that if they would've remained, they are the ones that walked out. We, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be in this situation, it would be different. This administration did not break off those negotiations, the, the county volunteer broke it off. They put us in that, in this dilemma to move forward, to have a full-time fire department. We're a growing city, it's growing pains, and it hurts. And you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to grow up and get off wagon wheels and oil lamps, and, and make the city. We've, we've got five big factories in, we've got distilleries in, and you're gonna, you need the police, you need the fire, you need the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, and you can't operate the way you've operated, as we have the last 15 years since I've been on the council. You can't do it anymore. Fred, I apologize, but we're concerned.
Well, that's fine. I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'm gonna make a, I'd like to introduce proposal ordinance B-2016 occupational license fee at the 1%, and ask for it to be read and approved.
An ordinance of the city of Barstown, Kentucky, amending Code of Ordinance Chapter 117 relating to occupational licenses. Be it ordained by the city of Barstown, Kentucky, that from and after passage, approval, and publication of this ordinance, that Chapter 117 of the Code of Ordinances relating to occupational license be amended as follows. Under 117.03 Occupational License Tax Payment Required, number one, strike short E, insert capital E for every person or business entity engaged in any business for profit, and any person or business entity that is required to make a filing with the Internal Revenue Service or the Kentucky Revenue Cabinet, shall be required to file and pay to the city an occupational license tax for the privilege of engaging in such activities within the city. The occupational license tax shall be measured by, strike one-half percent, insert 1% of a) all wages and compensation paid or payable in the city for work done or services performed or rendered in the city by every resident and non-resident who is an employee; b) the net profits from business conducted in the city by a resident or non-resident business entity. This law shall be in full force and effect on January 1, 2017, following publication as required by law. All ordinances or parts of ordinance, excuse me, in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict.
First reading. You can take a vote.
I'd like to go ahead and take a, take a vote as it stands right now, and although it's a first reading, it's probably just telling me that I have the right to do this, so I'm gonna pose that right on how it would go, so. A motion filed by Fred, leave a second.
A second.
A second by Councilman Buckman. And discussion? Okay. I'll just do a consensus, I'll start with Councilman Simpson.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
So, we got three, three.
Interesting.
That's fine, me.
That's it. Thank you, gentlemen, and we'll wait till the second reading. Let's move forward to the second readings for the E-911 Amendment, Chapter 97.
I have a summary.
Summary of ordinance B-2016-09, E-911 Emergency Telephone Services. This ordinance amends Section 97.02 Agreements to provide that the Barstown City Council made by resolution empower the mayor to enter into an agreement with Nelson County Fiscal Court and the appropriate telecommunication providers to establish and maintain an E-911 dispatch center. It also provides for an E-911 service fee for all occupied properties in the city. The ordinance also amends Section 97.03 fee to remove the E-911 fee from landline telephone bills, and to impose a $24 a year E-911 service fee on each occupied residential, commercial, and industrial unit in the city. The amended section provides that the method of collection of the $24 a year E-911 service fee will be determined by the city's chief financial officer and confirmed by municipal order. Failure to pay the E-911 service fee is designated as a Class A misdemeanor. Section 97.04 excess funds is hereby deleted in its entirety. This ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication in summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, City Attorney.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approved B-2016 dash 09.
Second. Second by Councilman Buckman.
Individual voter.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, I'll start with Councilman Copley.
Aye.
All right. Motion's adopted. Okay, thank you, guys. B-2016 Classification Compensation Plan, 16-10.
Summary of ordinance number B-2016-10, and ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance style and ordinance creating classification plan and compensation plan. This ordinance amends ordinance B-2015-16, previously amended by ordinances B-2016-02 and B-2016-05, by setting the ranges of the grade scale for city employees as specified for fiscal year 2016, 2017. This ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication in summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, City Attorney.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Need a motion, please?
Motion to accept ordinance B-2016-10, as read, and you'll go for a second.
A second by Councilman Simpson, thank you, Mr. Simpson. Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
No, individual, sir.
Individual, I apologize. Councilman Simpson, I'll start with you.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right. Motion's adopted, thank you. Let's do the... Student reports, staff and committees, cemetery committee, meeting.
The minutes are attached, for their review.
Yeah. Bobby, did you wanna talk about that?
Well, everybody got a copy of the minutes. If anybody got any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
People still down to get in? The other thing is parking on streets and right of ways, I kind of asked that to be put on there. I have my little neighborhood meetings, and we have issues there on South Second Street, you know, where the school, the buses are traveling through the South Second Street, they can't maneuver between the cars, and they're having to go around and maneuver that way. The other things is behind, you have it in Spring Hill, behind Dairy Queen, you have it in, behind Busy Bee, where people are parking the roadways or the ditchways. It's actually eroding the waters, the drainage of the streets. There, right down McGowan, the ditch no longer serves as a ditch, we have individuals dumping rock, dirt, and filling the ditchways up to have extra parking space. I think over the years, Bill, there on McGowan, we've had a few kids, one kid actually got hit, I know they're playing basketball on the street, and they're not supposed to be doing that. But in my opinion, roadways are designed to, for two vehicles to pass, and at any given time, you can't pass on McGowan or something, especially on Cary Court, where I'm getting the biggest complaints, vehicles not being able to pass, and the kids, you know, are running from one house to the next. So, but the biggest obstacle that we're running into is drainage issues. And we're having that, and we spent, it's been years ago, and Bill, I think, that was before you, you all got, Francis was here, he's been here since dirt, so, he would know. We spent, what, about $100,000 on McGowan to fix ditch lines up to there, and we should not, when they're first put in, that's why they should remain, other than being natural, so, if you get time, you wanna look. Neighborhoods have asked for no parking on the street to be put in there, and question is, where do they park? Well, you know, I don't care where you park, as long as it's not in the, not in the ditchways or the right of ways that belong to the city, that we have to, that you're filling in with rock and debris to stop up the drainage, parking your, behind the sidewalk up in your front yard. If it doesn't, in my opinion, I don't care where you park, as long as it's not on the street or in the ditchways, I mean, and Fred, you've dealt with that a lot, so, well, I mean, on, you know, with engineering, with waterways, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You've dealt with that through, what is it, MS4 or something like that? Give you some food for thought, if you wanna, if you wanna ride, I'll take you, and I'll show you what I'm talking about.
So, are you proposing then that we're gonna put a no parking sign on those streets?
And it won't be on every street in the city, it would be just in designated streets where I'm getting complaints, where we have issues. Like I said, I can take you through there, and I can show you where people have actually put, dumped a truckload of rocks and stopped the end of the culvert up, and so when it comes in the culvert, it's full, then flows over the roadway, and then you have roadway issues. That's what causes roadway failures.
Is this taking ordinance?
Could, but I, I mean, I'm just asking you.
No parking would just be a resolution.
And that's what I'm asking for, is we gotta, we have to, we have to do something that we're gonna, we're gonna, at a point to where, just like the county is doing, when they go out in the county and they have a ditchway or something that's flooding, they go out and take it up, and we're gonna have to start cleaning these ditches, because I don't think that, you know, we're gonna get in trouble for this too. And again, if it does come down the road, is it blocked up, it's gonna get us, you know, because we're gonna have to do, make us on a roadway, and we're gonna have to do something there.
Let me make a comment. I don't think we should have no ordinance, because you're gonna put a hardship on families. Some locations in the city, there's no way a person, you said, pull up in the front yard. Many families are very particular about their yard, and they're not gonna pull up in their front yard, so I don't think we should have no kind of ordinance for a person.
So, do they, do they pull up in the cities right of way to block the flow of water?
It's all over town, I understand, it's an issue, but you, all over town, not everybody has parking, I mean, driveway. Many, you can go all over Barstown, many do not have driveway, and they park, they have to park on the street.
Well, I'm not saying it down, I'm not saying in, on some certain streets, like on South Second Street, there's driveways down there, and I'm not saying mandated all over the city regardless. I'm gonna take a neighborhood, and then we're gonna look, and then evaluate it.
Right.
We're gonna analyze it, evaluate it, and then I'm gonna see if it needs it. Because if I do these little, these little neighborhood meetings like I'm going through, that's one of the biggest concerns.
I understand.
It's everything, so, and then the complaint from, on South Second comes from the school.
Right.
And you go down at three o'clock, and you go down at three o'clock, excuse me, you can't, the buses can't get by there, and they're having to let kids out at the end of the street and walk, so, I'm saying it poses a hazard.
Right.
Just food for thought, and just that you...
I'll go along with that, you know, certain, some location possibility, you know, you may have to do some enforcement, not everybody's coming down.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lydian. If you wanna, and if you, if you like, give me a shout, we're right around, and I'll show you somewhere, I'll take some photos and show you. Okay? Where are we at? Okay, discussion of TAP application for multi-use pass in Barstown, so.
Jessica has to have that put on.
Oh, Larry, go ahead.
There is a grant program, it's an extension of the Highway Act they passed, where you, it's like our downtown project, and it's an eighty-federal, twenty program, and we could, and we talked about getting estimate cost to put a bike lane, ped lane from Mago to the west side along, along 245, and maybe connecting on Lincoln and Chambers and Templin, and maybe two phases, to have a walk on the, and it will rank pretty well, I think. I think we have a pretty fair shot of getting it. I can't tell you how much, but that is, in essence, what we dreamed of or trying to do, if you all are interested.
Is that a matching grant?
Eighty-twenty federal or TAP, it's Transportation Alternative Plan or something, anyhow, it's for sidewalks. And there are bike lane, ped lane, and there's probably no greater need to match, it would extend then from all the way from Walmart through that connector road east-west.
With the Bethlehem Recreation Part One ending up here with that, Elvis?
Well, I don't think it's, I think we'll do just well. I don't, I think we'll grade fairly well, yes, it won't hurt. And then, of course, meaning Phase Two, I don't know that we have to go all that far in year one, they don't have it yet, but also the school on Templin, that'll make costs a little more, because you'd have to extend the drainage over, Templin doesn't have any shoulders at all. So, if you extend it from Chambers on out to the new school that the school's talking about, for a walk on that street, and we were, we were talking just maybe one side on that, so, and one side on 245, beyond this side, to match what we're already...
But if you ride on 245, you'll see from the Andrews Center, and then on the other side of Jill Hills, you'll see a path where people are walking and riding bicycles in his shoes, and then there, I know of three different wheelchair people that are using it and riding on the edge of, riding on the edge of 245, highly dangerous. And at a twenty, or eighty-twenty match, I think, I think, I don't think it's unreasonable, and I think it's imperative that we...
I think the applications are to be in by the end of next month, so we'll try to have announcements for you and give you a heads up on the figure, and maybe the failure will want to tell when we get it flushed out.
Jessica's working her fingers to the bone, so we can leave a long way to get it finished, it's very important.
Mayor, could I weigh in here at the understaff and committees for the 911?
Oh, yeah.
As the council, I've sent out the email forwarding comments from Matthew Height on the draft interlocal agreement for 911 dispatch, and I gave you a little synopsis, I won't go through all of them for the sake of time tonight, I won't go through all those comments. I wanted Gerald's input on a couple of things, and, you know, just to restate, at the very least, that I think that this, some of the changes changed the character of the agreement really from a partnership to more of a customer-vendor relationship, which doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily bad, we have those relationships with people all the time. But in terms of, like, for instance, the issue of the director's position, and that would go the way they proposed, it would go to a committee, which would be a majority vote of the committee, which would be controlled, designated by the county, so they effectively would have control of the director's position. And, you know, that, you know, in terms of the service that we get, and by the way, again, just so that you're aware, the issue that I focused on most carefully is the service that we are getting as part of a, part of our 911 agreement here. And to reiterate, we've had now two police chiefs, while I've been here, two police chiefs and two fire chiefs that have said the service is not adequate, we have service issues, and we're not getting response in terms of service issues. When we first brought those issues, or I raised those issues, at least initially, there was a, the response was, what issues? Nobody's been complaining. When we went to then document the complaints, because we want, we'd like to get those issues resolved, there was some consternation, now we're looking at the issues. Well, of course we're looking at the issues, this is about service, and 911 services, Councilman Lydian says, this is not something to mess around with, I don't care what you're paying and who you're paying it to, if you have a fire department that says, we're not able to do our job because of dispatch, that's a problem. If you have a police department that says, we can't do our job right because of dispatch, that's a problem. I question, I question, first of all, that, what concerns me a little bit through this negotiation process is that there's not been a real recognition or realization that we do have issues. It's like, well, those aren't really issues, that's really been the response, those aren't really issues. When you have a partnership, and I come to you, and we're partners, and I say, we've got issues, I don't think anybody in this room would probably say, let's work on those issues, let's try to understand them a little more, and we'll try to address those issues. And I don't really sense that sense of urgency to deal with that, and this is, again, 911, as Councilman Lydian says, it's very important, so there should be a sense of urgency. When you have a person, just as an example, when you have, and I saw the fire chief's response to this live and in person, when you have a, an emergency call out to Spring Hill, where someone, I believe, died of a heart attack, and Barstown Fire was not dispatched, and ambulance arrived, and the person was dead, or pronounced dead, you know, the 10 minutes that was saved might have made a difference, it might not have, but the chief really would have liked to have had the opportunity to provide that service, and we, Barstown Fire was not dispatched. That was the one where the response was rather heated between the two, dispatch and the chief, and I think that's part of the issue too, is there's, one of the things I realize, and I'm an eternal optimist, I think things can be worked out, but there's a lot of ill will in the wind as relates to the parties. I've seen another email today where the parties were sniping at one another, and it's unfortunate because it should be treated more like a business. But what I'd like for it to have is Gerald's input on a couple of things. First of all, input in terms of, there is, they removed a section in here that talks about, up to this point, we have been paying, in theory, we've been paying forty percent of the, you know, the total for dispatch. And in fairness, the current agreement does not address the, what happens if we terminate, what happens to the assets of the dispatch board. So, I think that if we were to terminate right now, I don't think we're entitled to assets, but if we were to terminate later on, I think we should get a percentage of whatever our percentage is. If I, we have a partnership, and Councilman Williams, I have a partnership, and I provide forty percent, and he provides sixty percent, and we terminate, he doesn't get a hundred percent of whatever we have as a business, it just doesn't work that way. But the county feels like they should be entitled to a hundred percent value of that. Again, the current agreement doesn't say anything, but I think if, as we're going forward, I think that's only fair that we would get whatever percentage we put in. If we put in a fixed fee, and they give you that percentage of twenty percent, then maybe we should only get twenty percent. But they propose striking that out, because they don't feel like they should have to pay for the assets, and I'm making their argument for them, they shouldn't have to pay for the assets if we leave. They provided a cost figure of a hundred and forty, whereas we had proposed twenty-three thousand eight hundred, or twenty-two thousand eight hundred, I believe. They have, and that is, I'm assuming away the fee, the fee is gonna be paid to 911 provider no matter what, so, that amount is a set figure, don't figure that in. Over and above that, the twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollar figure was the one, again, that we set for state police, they are asking for a hundred and forty-four thousand twenty dollars, or forty percent of the expense is not covered by the 911 fees, whichever is lesser, which is, if they're gonna go for that high figure, at least they said, or the lesser of the twenty percent, not the greater of the forty percent, excuse me, not the greater, but they said the lesser, so, you know, plugging in whatever number you want there for a hundred and forty-four thousand, that lesser figure, I like that, that less, lesser language. I'm gonna propose, just so that you all know, this is not in there, but I'm gonna propose some language on policies and procedures that talks about, makes it clear that the member agencies, in other words, Barstown Police, should be able to designate what their policies are in terms of dispatch. Dispatch shouldn't say, here's how we're gonna dispatch you all. Barstown Police, Barstown Fire, New Haven Fire should be able to go to, New Haven Fire, Northeast Nelson should be able to go to the dispatch center, so here's how we wanna be dispatched. I think that's fundamental, and so I'm gonna make that a little more clear. Again, in terms of the employees, they changed this, that where the, in terms of hiring, firing, compensation, just one performance review of the director, instead of Nelson County Judge Executive and the mayor of Barstown, they proposed that it would be the same committee that we have addressing or evaluating the director, the director's position, which would be a majority appointed by, really, Nelson Fiscal Court. And again, it just changed, I think it changed the character from one of a partnership to a vendor-client. As we go forward, and as I respond to this, I would like Gerald's response to, in terms of the provision, in terms of our, the assets, number one, number two, in terms of the director's position in particular, and the fee amount, the amount that we would be providing in the funding. And if you all can provide me some sort of input there, I will go back and...
Can I add something to yours, Tim?
Yes, sir.
He's talking about, Councilman Lydian says it's of essence, and it's important, and that, and dispatch is vitally important, and you add to that, that as of today, I think the count was that they have saved fourteen lives, and that is not cutting the Anderson County EMS short. Alls I'm saying is, we are added, and we're helping them, and it's not saying that they would, would not have passed on, but with that added, the extra EMTs has been required for them to be firefighters, it is an asset to the city, I think it's vitally important. So, I mean, we're assisting EMS, because there's been times they couldn't get there in time because of, ambulance had to come from the south into town for bluestop, and we made it, and we provided that support for them, and I think that's important.
I agree with that.
The other thing, excuse me, wait a minute, the other thing is about complaints, there have been complaints filed in the last administration, but none of it, and it was documented by many different officers had filled out complaints, but to no avail, those have been destroyed or disappeared or walked off. those have been destroyed or disappeared or walked off. It's, the, the policy of dispatching, and Tim touched on the policy of dispatching, and we should be able to go in and tell this dispatch, "This is how we want Barstown Police to be dispatched." And then you have these dispatchers, there's no set form or pattern or a chain, what word am I looking for?
Procedure policy.
Procedure policy. So what if New Haven comes in and says, "No, I don't, I don't want it. My, I don't want our two or three officers to be dispatched this way, I want it this way." Rowing Ford, they don't want to dispatch this way, they want, Nelson County Volunteers want to dispatch this way. There is no way, shape, or form can those dispatchers dispatch in, I think there's seven different agencies, is that correct, Larry? Seven different agencies to dispatch several different ways because the way, that's the way each department wants it. It's, it's unheard of and ridiculous. It should be a procedure in dispatching and it should be set forth for everyone, especially police and fire. So that would be almost impossible to do by looking at it that way. I just don't think you can do that. What, you looking at me like, "Look, I thought you were just going to add something?"
No, you're speaking, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, so I don't think, I don't think that is, is any way that that could be done. And for us to go in and to, partnership is your decision, but I would love to go in business with some of you all and you give me, you give me X amount of dollars and you don't have a say. Give me $100,000 and you don't have a say. I'd love that. I'll take you, I'll do that business. Last but not least, if you do this, the city's paid the $144,020, correct?
Yes, it's possible.
That's for the possible, that's for the city to pay. The 911 fee, and this is Trace's numbers, that she received from Barbara today, I think, was $156,344. So that's the 911 fees. Now, our city residents are going to pay in two, two ways. One, we're going to pay the $144,020 and they're also going to pay the, the 911 fee that's going to be imposed, which may, could go to KSP or another dispatching agency. But we still, our city residents are going to pay that. Now, the ZERCA, which months and months ago, we received an email that said that we were supposed to pay about $51,000, $52,000 for that program. Well, now here comes the switch and bait. Trace and I got on a conference call and it is now at 100 and, about $106,000 is what it's going to cost. Where it was, we only had, I think when Debbie gave us this bid, this money of 151,000, 152,000, she only plugged in about 15 MDTs. Well, how do you have 15 when we haven't had 15 cars since when?
Or me.
When we had all of them, right?
Yeah.
So now we've got 28. So you can't, you can't go in and do a lowball and do the bait and switch where you take the $51,000 and then, and then you come up like, "Oh, my gosh, we've got to have these extra MDTs." Well, no, now we're at $106,000. So that's all I guess to say.
Total is $106,000.
Yeah, the total on that is $406,000, $424,000. That's what, that's what the new price tag is. And when we first got the budget from dispatch, it was $257,000, then it went to 170, then it's down to 150, now then it's 140 or something. So I don't know what figures were actually, but I do know that we will be paying $406,000, $424,000.
Let me make two comments related to the party. The past party, he improved my knowledge and I have changed, my opinion have changed, and he improved my knowledge about those firefighters when they're out and when they go out in no trucks, so he went, I'm not going into more detail, but party did improve my knowledge. And this to, Terry Buckman, you kind of touched on something, I'm not going into no details. I have a concern, very deeply concerned on something you just, you kind of touched on a little bit. I'm going to say one word, relationship. I have very deeply concern, you know, and you kind of touched on it a few minutes ago, but I'm not going into no details, but I have concern about that. And it's, no, but I said...
Okay. Yeah, my, my comments, Tim, is that we should, we need to put that input, the language back in there about the assets if, if we dissolve it. It's, I mean, being silent on it, that's not any good either, but obviously if we break up and we put 40%, now I think we should get 40% now. And then you talked about, perhaps policies and procedures, you and I talked about that earlier, about kind of beefing that up and making that a little more specific. And then this last part about the, the director, who the director reports to, I guess that gets to, to the crux of it. When you go back to how this all started two years ago, I guess, that the, the, the two chiefs came to the mayor and said, "Hey, we've got some problems," and, and it goes back to the response and them being dispatched like they want and the response time and all that. So we need to keep that in focus, that if, if those two entities, if the, if the fire department and the police department, if their problem is not solved in this, then we've really done nothing. We have to solve that problem. They have to really think, "Yep, this is going to solve our problem. We're going to give you, bring you listen to, we're going to get our problems taken care of." And putting this other layer in here, this committee, to me, we're, we're moving away from that. I agree, we're moving away from that. So we need to try to get that back in there for, for this. And I'm going to talk about a couple, one more, the related businesses.
But you know, when you talk about the, that, in there, this is not a new thing, this relationship, as Councilman Lydian said, it's not new. I found a document from Mayor Hibbs, not Mayor Hibbs, from Mayor Shekels where it was actually given to the dispatch and to the fire department that this, you know, relationship and it's unfair how we're paying and it has to be rectified. So it's not, it's, it even goes back to...
Yeah, and, and it's not so much the paying, it's, it's the service. Dispatches serve, their, their job is to dispatch first responders. That's their, that's their, they do. And the, the people they're serving, the didn't, the fire and police, within reason, if they're not being served, thus, thus they can't do their job. If they can't provide, you know, protect and serve, then we're missing. We have to solve that problem. This has to solve that problem. So, and I think some of these changes are, are moving in the wrong direction. So I'm going to go back and, if I may, talk about KSP. Or maybe you, let's wait until you get all your responses on this and then...
Well, I'd like to hear the other, other councilman. My biggest concern is that if we enter into this agreement, state with county, there's, I heard nothing about additional costs, additional upgrades. What, what's going to cost us to, if they have to put in the, additional equipment?
$144,000.
Oh, that's not going to touch it. When they, he's going to get a new computer system next year. Dean said they need all the new computers and stuff next year.
But the way it's written, it's $144,000.
No, that's for, that's, that's for our dispatch. That doesn't say about any upgrades or...
Well, they, they, the way this is written, they would have to come back and ask for additional funds. We, this, this is a five-year agreement at 140, if, assume you approve $144,020, it would be set at $144,020 or the lesser of 40%. And if there was something over and above that, they would have to make that specific request of you all.
Right. So they're talking, they're already talking about upgrades next year. What we can do, say, "Okay, now we're not going to play anymore. We're going, now we're going to go do something different." "Now we'll go to state police." Well, maybe we, and they'll have an option next year. State says, "Well, we've already let somebody else save your spot." Now we're stuck with paying $700,000 for that $1.4 million upgrade. Or we start on dispatch, which is, that's not feasible.
I'll let you know on the pricing then.
I, I'm just saying, if, I want something in there saying that if we go back to this agreement, that we only pay certain amounts and we have to approve these upgrades.
Yeah, that's...
They'll have us. I mean, they'll, they'll have us.
That's what it says.
Yeah, but...
What do you do if you, if you can't, you can't get enough money?
But it goes beyond that, you've got to look at the service and every one of you council members met with our emergency service department heads, you're talking about, it's not the money, they're talking about service. They're talking about the, the liability issue, the safety of the fire, safety of police. You've got to...
Has there been no changes? I complained for three and four years. The police went on a pursuit that day at 2:45 and lost radio contact in Bullet County Line, didn't have no radio. State police had to call it for them. I've been in situations, I, I use my cellphone, thank God for cell phones. And it was, and I complained, it's like kicking a dead horse. I complained and it fell on deaf ears. So finally, after a while, police officer just complained because it's, it's useless. You just call in on cellphone or you, you hope nothing happens.
Well, the, the one thing that I've tried to write in here and, and as I was explaining to anybody listening, is that this, this agreement really kind of puts us in a position where either the service improves or we can document that the service hasn't improved and it, and it justifies going elsewhere.
That documentation is already happened.
Yeah, it's...
You've got to see that.
And, and, again, I, I look at this not so much from the money point of view as the, although it does concern me, Councilman Buckman, I, I have to say that one of the things that concerns, when, when I've gone and looked, I hate to even mention the fact that my wife does computer stuff for a living and she's very, she's very high up at LGD. And when I ask her some of these things, just from the layperson point of view, you know, just, "Honey, what the..." The first thing she says is, "There's got to be strategic planning here. They should know, in, in this county, because technology changes, they should know what's coming down the road, three years, five years, and they should be planning for it." And when I raise these issues, either they do not know or they do not want to tell us. And neither one of those is good. If they do not know, oh, my gosh. If they know and they're not telling us, shame on them.
And, oh, my gosh.
And, oh, my gosh. But the issue of, everybody that's listened to the news recently saw that Louisville, Bullet County, they upgraded 911, Metro saved, upgraded. And they now have the ability to text and you can get text alerts and stuff like that. Are we even looking at that? Don't know. I mean, it's, it's, that troubles me. That troubles me, just, as a citizen troubles me, but it troubles me when I'm trying to negotiate something and I'm trying to put provisions, that's why I said, and I feel really justified in saying, "We need a fixed fee here." Because I don't think they really have done, as you have requested of your departments here in the city of Barstown, that they were, that they do some strategic planning for the next four years, five years, whatever it is. I don't see that that's been done. If that's been done, I think that you all should be informed because you're funded, you're paying the bill. But I, I don't know that that's happening. If it is happening, we should be informed. And by the way, this does it on a yearly basis, this agreement says on a yearly basis, at the beginning of the year, each agency's got to come forward and say, "Here's what we've got planned," or "Here's what we want to happen." And that goes through the budgeting process. Tried to incorporate some of that in there, but it's way too serious. It's 911. It's 911 and we've got to have good service. And, okay, you know, money's one thing, but we've got to have good service. I'm not sure that there's anybody who calls 911 that gets good service and responds and go, "I got to pay too much for that 911 call." No, they love that. And it was very important to them that day. And I think that's, that's what I kept in mind when I was doing this. So is there some consensus on the, the, getting our assets upon leaving? Again, if we were to leave right now, I don't think we're entitled anything because that's not the agreement. But if we leave, if we enter this agreement and we leave in the future, I think that there should be some allowance for what we paid for. I think that's pretty fundamental if it's, if it's truly a partnership. And then the other thing is, is that in terms of, if you want the person at the top of the, he, at the director's position to be responsive to your member agencies, I think you, you might want a little more input on that. That's my opinion.
I agree. But you can't have head of dispatch tell city department heads, "You're not my boss and I don't answer to you."
Everybody works for somebody and I would say that that director needs to be responsible to the people that are, that are financial participants. And if we're at 40% and we're, we're most certainly a partner in it and probably a boss. And I agree, percentage, the first thing you mentioned, a percentage of assets, I think 40%. I don't know if that's the number you used.
Well, it probably need to be adjusted, it probably needs to be adjusted to take into the account that our percentage may be, you know, it should be our, what we put in. That, that's a mathematical thing. Somebody can come in and determine that. And there's language that can be drafted in there. And if we're not putting in 40%, and this is my opinion, if we're not putting in 40%, we're not entitled to 40%. If we're putting in 38.5%, that's what we're entitled to. So it's mathematical, but I think that's, that's reasonable. And, and last but not least, again, they have, we started off with 22,800, they've come back with 144,020, or 40%, whichever is lesser.
There's something else that you guys have to look at. There's seven other entities here, like, like New Haven, Bloomfield, Rowing Ford, North Nelson, Nelson County Volunteer Corporation. None of those seven entities pay anything for dispatching. Now, granted, maybe New Haven might have 10 calls a month, it still has something. And should city taxpayers pay for their dispatching? I don't think so. There, there's a value on each call and I, and that value has already been set by how much per call, and I don't remember. Larry, do you remember what that is, the value of each call?
I've written it out, but...
Well, the value of that call is, the price of that call has been set. So what I'm saying is, you can go back and look. And, and do I think it's fair that the citizens of Barstown pay for Bloomfield's dispatching, Ralph, North Nelson's dispatching, New Haven, Rowing Ford, Nelson County Volunteer? I do not think so. I, I don't think that's right for the city of taxpayers. And I know it's, the burden may be placed on, on the county to do that, but I don't think it's right for the citizens of Barstown to pay for their dispatching. And I didn't mean, I had to throw that in, I wouldn't get it all, so...
Mayor, if I might on that, on that same point, I, I think the, the county actually has the, is going in the right direction and has the right idea about how to charge for dispatch. Because the people of New Haven and the people in North Nelson for their fire and all of these other agencies, they don't have to pay for dispatch because it's being paid for with their county tax dollars. So the people in, in New Haven are pay, are having their dispatch paid for out of county tax dollars, as are the people who get dispatched for North Nelson and all the other agencies. It's only one small step to take for the county to be equitable, and that is to have the dispatching for the people in the city of Barstown paid for with their county taxes, just like everybody else in the county. Every other person in the county, whether incorporated or unincorporated, has their dispatch services paid for with their county taxes. And so should we.
So should we.
It's not fair to people of Barstown.
All that having been said, still got a number here of 144,020...
Uh, Councilman Simpson, have something?
I think more so, more importantly than the money, as you said after talking to the, the department head, the number one thing is, is the, the communications and dispatch that goes to our police, fire, and what have you, however that is set up, that's got to be addressed or not even talking about a lot of this stuff if, and I think I've heard tonight, that that's not going to change. Well, if we don't, if, if some of the, the way that's been dispatched and some of these problems are not addressed, we're spinning their wheels. Now, so with that though, we, I say we have more equal power to, to the director where we've got some meat on the bone. If it's like you're saying, that, that at this point, it's, it's going to be a... If it's like you're saying, that at this point, it's going to be, somebody else is going to tell them what to do and we turn in a complaint to that person, they don't do nothing about it, where do we go? Where does our chief go?
Let me elaborate on this email that was given today. Dispatches now filing complaints on Barstown police officers if they don't answer the radio in time.
Maybe you can't hear them.
That's, but that's what I'm saying, that's how bad it's gotten, Councilman, it's that bad.
They can't hear it until they call you on the cellphone, on your personal cellphone, so you need, I can't get hold of you on the radio, because the radio's so bad. Here you got a call, give you a call on my personal cellphone.
Go ahead, Mr. Simpson, I'm sorry. Forgive me for interrupting.
As far as the, I agree with you, Forrest, getting away from percentage, just any percentage. We need to know what's going to cost, what is it going to cost. And you lost the train of thought on my last one. It doesn't, and it doesn't matter about the cost. If we can't fix it, if we're not going to be in a position where we can address these issues, I mean, it sounds like that we're going to be exactly where we are now, and it sounds like things are not working. So if my first would be, we've got to get some kind of agreement and we've got a say in. And if we don't, if we don't have a say, I think that the writing don't know why we can't continue. If the police chiefs or the chiefs are not getting the information and from the way it sounds, there's a lot of that going on.
Well, the one thing that I've confirmed with just about everybody is, including the chief, in particular the fire chief, I put this question to him point blank as our call, may not be exactly this wording, but I said, do you care if you sit on the board, do you care what we pay? If you've got good service, would you really, would the rest of this really matter? And he said, no. No. He didn't care if he sits on the board. If he went to somebody, he could go to them and say, I have this issue, could you resolve it? Yes, sir, we sure will. And come back and say, here's what we did. And he goes, that's correct. If you did that, he wouldn't care who's on the board, he wouldn't care who the director was, he wouldn't care, he probably honestly wouldn't care how much you spent on it, you know? But that's, to me, that's it in a nutshell.
But you're not going to get that without agreeing to them.
Well, I don't have a lot, right now, I don't have a lot, honestly, I said I was an optimist. I don't have a lot of optimism that the service will improve. They've had opportunities to recognize issues and they don't want to recognize the issues, they don't want to, they'd want to say that there's not, they're kind of, there's a denial. Is there some ray of hope? Yes, I think that in our discussions with Matthew Ayton, the judge, I think that they said, yeah, we realize there's some things that need to change and I will take them at their word on that.
Do you all think they're trying to sell us a car, a used car?
I'm an optimist, Judge. I mean Judge.
There you go.
There we go. Mayor. Again, and as I was talking, as Councilman Simpson was talking, maybe the option, one option would be to say that we're going to extend this agreement through the end of the year to allow them to address concerns.
I'm for that, I was going to bring that up. Let me say, say that again, I think I belong, you said extension?
Yeah, extend the agreement through the end of the year and allow them to address the concerns and see how serious they are.
I know, because I tell you, time is running out.
Yeah, I mean, it's, honestly, it's kind of put up or shut up time. I mean, they have to, and by the way, I said earlier, and I felt, I felt bad about saying at one point in a meeting, I said, it's almost like they're saying, give us the money and shut up. And let me tell you something, through this process, I am feeling more and more that that's exactly what's happening. And understand, if it's where they've got control and we're just paying them money for a service, okay, but we pay money to the people, the people that answer, and I came to this revelation today, we pay money to a service that answers service calls for sewer, water, cable that comes, and that we pay the service, a company to do that. And let's say that we had a customer who said, I am waist deep in waste, literally waste, human waste, in my basement here, the sewer's backing up. And that person was put on hold, then they said, yeah, you know, that sounds like it'd be a problem, let me get back to you, let me call somebody. And then somebody, that person, that poor customer called Jessica three days later incensed, which they should, and said, what about this? And she said, I don't know anything about it. You call the service provider and the service provider says, no, prove to me that there was a call. Prove to me that there was a call and then we'll talk. If they did that, boom, they'd be gone. We would no longer contract with them, probably as of that day. That's kind of what we're getting here. I mean, and again, there's some strong personalities and strong feelings of this, and again, I'm an optimist and I think that people, I think everybody wants to do a good job and do it well, but.
But you need to.
I'm open to suggestions here, I've been told to negotiate your own behalf, I'm open to suggestions.
I'm waiting to, or wanting to extend this, you don't say that's what we're going to do yet, because KSP has people waiting in line wanting to dispatch. So how long can I, can I hold that wolf off? I don't know. We are, we've been talking and that's the thing that I don't want to do, because if we lose that, then we're obligated to pay this $406,424. And I just may want to rethink this and I will try to get an answer one day this week is how long that they will hold.
Well, here's what I'd like. She did try. No, you go ahead, I'm already.
I, it's just a couple of questions. In reference to the complaints and issues, do, did we ever set a response time to respond to the emails that were sent? And do we have anything that's containing them? Are they on some spreadsheet? Are they on software? Or are we just spinning our wheels with that? Because you have to have some type of response. And there should be a time that you respond to the email that is sent to you, regardless of who it's being sent to. You have to have a reply and then a solution. And none of that language is in there whatsoever. And so we'll never get a response because we're not asking for that response. Normally, yes, you should respond to an email, but there's no language in this agreement that says, and that needs to be in there. That's part of resolutions where, you know, this is service, this is what we're expecting, and this is the time we expect it. And then what are the consequences of that action if it's not done? And that's lacking in the agreement. In reference to the employees, are you saying the, you want input on the director and the employees and the dispatcher, or just the director?
The way it's written, the way it was originally written, it would just be the director. The dispatch board would make the approval of the.
Gotcha.
I don't think you need to micromanage that. And I agree with you, by the way, and it's a shame it has to go, and I'm used, kind of used the planning commission as a template. Nothing in any or interlocal agreement says that if we go to Jan with an issue about Airbnb that she has to respond in so many days, but she does. She does, she knows that's her job, she does it, and she's very conscientious about it. Don't mean to throw her under any kind of bus here, but that to me, you're right and you're wrong. It should be in here because we're at a point where we have to have it in here, but in the normal course of business, you shouldn't have to put that in there.
That is true, but as a service, it's a service, and so that needs to be in the agreement. Because we're at a point where we have to have it in there and that shouldn't be overlooked. That's something that's very important. I just want to speak to something from the first beginning. I think that we truly got off on the wrong foot. The first step that should have been done was, when this was brought to us, KSP, someone from KSP should have came and gave us a presentation, whether it was during a working session or an open session. But KSP should have came and gave their expert factual information about the service that they were going to render for us. If they had done that, I truly don't believe that we would be sitting here having, calling in for meetings, trying to go over this for two or three months. That's who needs to be here, KSP. KSP is going to offer us a service. We need to hear from KSP, come and give us that presentation. It's just like with any other place. You know, when you want a service, they come in and they explain what their service is and they give you all the factual information. They have that information. If they're servicing Harden County, Spencer County, whoever, they're going to have those specific numbers. They're going to give you that expert advice of what we need. And that wasn't done. So we're spinning our wheels, continuously spinning our wheels about this and it just doesn't make any sense. I say that you need to bring KSP in here and give us a presentation. Let us hear from KSP about the information that they're, the service that they're going to provide. I think that would be clear and cut. I mean, we've been talking about this for three months.
I'll work on that this week.
Thank you.
And if I had that months ago, come in my office, we could have discussed that, we would have had that months ago. But I'll get, Larry and I will get together and we'll do that this week. But you've got to remember too, is that we have to, it's something that we can't delay and is brought to my attention, is that this $106,000 that we're going to have to pay for this is earned. Right now, we're running on a shoestring. Megan is being washed boarded by information and so it's something that we can't cut off. And if we invest, if we put this off and we go and pay the $106,000, are we going to get what, 40% of it back? Or are we going to get all of 106? So I'll get with KSP. Larry will do that hopefully this week and we'll bring them in here.
They're tied up with the, we actually had talked to them about coming tonight, but they were tied up at the Kentucky State Fair. So as soon as the fair's over, and I've been chatting with them, with somebody from the E-Town Post, and as soon as the fair's done, they'll be willing to come and would have somebody from the dispatch side of it, one of their chief dispatchers that posts for, then also somebody from the administrative side who wrote the actual proposal and would be involved in the memorandum of agreement. So we'll get both sides of that.
Might even sit with you, get a copy of the policies and procedures.
For the sake of moving this on, then are we then on hold until, say our working session or first meeting in September?
Let me make a comment. I agree with everything Annika, Councilman Cope, you should have done it, Dave, one. My concern, you know, I had said it before, what's going to happen? Okay, next month, this contract in. And Kentucky State Police indicated it will take them three months for preparation. And we messing around. And this extension is going to run out. What if they don't approve a suspension? Give us a suspension. That is putting, that is serious. We jeopardizing my life and everybody's life in the city of Barstown. Something's going to have to be done between now and that deadline. You understand where it comes from?
Well, and I think I asked that question of Larry, and there's some provisions that I don't think they, you know, the 911 lines won't be moved over tonight, there has to be a transition period and I don't think anybody would, I hope nobody would do some sort of vindictive, you know, we're not answering 911 calls.
Well, I mean, if you're in between lying, what's been going on? Things do not look too good, I'm certain.
Well, again, I would hope that they wouldn't, that that wouldn't be something that would happen, but.
It was.
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a kind of a different spin on what Keisha said, she kind of stole my notes. But, you know, some weeks ago, I made some, I made the comment that I talked to Joe Burrows and I really felt this KSP thing was not feasible. Larry disagreed with me and I told him, I said, well, prove me wrong. Well, he called Joe a couple of times, talked to him, and in fact, I went up Friday and talked to Joe again, kind of hear it all again. I heard the same story, but as he said, they've never done it before, but as Larry has said, from a technology standpoint, it's possible, I mean, it can be done. It's just, you know, they're administratively, they want to go to bigger regional dispatch, but it's not impossible to do. So I got thinking about this KSP thing again, and I agree with what you said, but I'd like to take a little, take a step further. The people who are using this are the fire and police departments, they're the ones who came to us with the problem. I would like for them to come to us, maybe with KSP, and explain to us how this is all going to work. I want them to understand it and sell it to us that they're looking for a solution. And we're trying to find a solution for them. And just as you said, it's, they're the ones who know, they know dispatching. Rather than me trying to figure out how we're going to move the phone lines and all that, let them understand it, let them explain it to it, let them say, yeah, this is what we want to do. The mayor apparently wants to do it, Larry thinks it's something we should do, I'm getting a lot of feedback from the fire and police that they think we ought to do it. So I'm like, they're the one who knows the problem, they know what the solution should be, they're the one who has to live with the solution. If we force a solution on them, so let's let them, as part of this dog and pony show, I would like for the fire and police departments to explain to us, how's all this going to work? How, you know, if a tourist is driving down the road and calls 911 on their cellphone, where's that call go? How does it get dispatched? How does it get, so that they've thought all that through, I assume they have, maybe, but that would make me feel better making a decision. If they come to us, if they come to us with a solution and say, this will work, we've studied it, we know it will work, it will make me feel better than me listening to KSP and thinking, yeah, I think that'll work. And then them, you're in the same, that's, I think that would make it, that would close the loop on it.
You know, Fred, ideally, if they could be, you know, responsible, that we sit in county both, go to KSP, it would save the county excess of over $400, $450,000.
I've said that all along.
And then Keith Metcalf would have plenty of black talk.
But anyway.
So I've been saying, if we all would go as one unit and go, and then there's one standard of dispatching, one way of dispatching and not have several different ways of dispatching.
But in lieu of that, I mean, we, I'm still open to considering KSP as an option, but to really consider it, I would like, I mean, to me that makes sense.
I will have KSP here and we're working on it on the working session and.
But I really want the fire and police chiefs to buy into this and tell us, yep, this is going to work, this is how this is all going to work, this is, and somebody explain to us how we transfer the phone lines over.
You know, Fred, when we were dispatching, Bill can both dispatch a little bit, we actually were dispatching at the old police department. When a 911 call come in, and depending on if they need police or if they just need an ambulance, what you would do is you would say, hold please, push a button, it transfers directly to a phone line. It wasn't through a T1 line, but it's through a phone line that went to EMS out here off of.
Bloomfield Road.
Off of Bloomfield Road, it would transfer out to there. And that's how it went. But now what it does is they transfer it to a T1 line, which is a computer line. But anyway, that's, they'll be here and they'll explain it to you.
I have a question, Mayor. Give you exactly something. If Barstown was with state police and we had a blackout here in Barstown, utility, who would the residents in this city will call?
For utilities?
Yeah.
We're paying a company now because the present dispatch would not dispatch our utilities like we're used to. So we're paying a company about $28,000 to $30,000 a year to dispatch those utilities for us. In the first agreement, in the dispatch agreement when it first originated, we. In the first agreement, in the dispatch agreement when it first originated, we had an agreement that they would dispatch our utilities, which is water, sewer, electric, or anything like that. Then they had, they wanted to cut costs, so they laid off three, I think, three dispatchers. And they said, "Now you all have to do your own," we had to get a company to do those after-hours calls or those utility calls. So we had to hire a company, and I think it's $28,000 or $30,000, $28,000, $28,000 a year to pay for this company to answer our after-hours call. Up to a certain number of calls, and then we'd start paying per call. But that's why we have a couple of the CSR ladies that live close. I've came in, Barbies came in, Kathy's came in. We, when we get calls, lights out during a storm, we've all come in, we take calls to keep the cost down from this call-taking center charging us extra because we're going to go over our amount of calls. So, so we've got it all covered.
I'm kind of.
But that's been going on for quite some time now.
I'm kind of behind in time. So anyway, what number would a resident call if they have a blackout?
They would still call 3211, I mean, the.
5947.
5947, and it would go to the call-taking center. And then they would call whoever's uncalled for the water, sewer, electric, whatever. They would call, just like they're doing now. But now, yeah, you just call City Hall, and that's how, and that's not going to change.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, if I could, the emphasis and the driving force behind our E911 discussions, hoping to put to me one. It's all been about money. That was the first thing, Eric, am I correct? It was what it's going to cost.
It started, it started out that way, but in the last, in the last administration, we didn't have.
I know, we didn't have. Okay, so it started out about money. Then there was a shift in emphasis to communication and safety issues and so forth. Okay, well, it seems to me, safety trumps money, and that should have been the first concern. So anyone who is a first responder, if we're talking about lives that are in jeopardy, they have a responsibility to make us aware of the problem. I haven't heard anything about a problem until this year. I've been a councilman for, no, eight years.
There have been complaints that have been written, documented, and given to the chain, through the chain of command, and as I've said earlier, those have been documented, but those documents don't exist because I guess they've been destroyed or something. But the radio, and even Tim has heard, the old fire chief, the old police chief, you hear the present fire chief, the present police chief, have all said they want to get away from dispatch, they want to go to KSP, or they start their own dispatch. So just, and what we are doing now, and what the present chief and lieutenant are doing now, is they're actually, if there is an issue, they want to document the complaint, as it should. There is a protocol. It is a policy and procedure issue that is in place, but has never been used, and it's being used now, and we're documenting complaints. Because if you don't, how can you fix a problem? You know, some people ride on a flat tire for miles, but they don't know it, and I don't know why, but if you don't, if you don't hear it, I guess you just keep on going.
The, just to respond to that a little bit, that when I asked the former police chief, I haven't asked that of the current police chief or fire chief, but when I asked the former police chief about that very issue, I said, he was, again, I've said this before, he was a strong advocate for having in-house dispatch. And when I, he never cared about the money. Never. He never mentioned one, you know. Now, I think a couple of times he said, "What are we paying for?" But he never once mentioned the money. I think that there is a dual track here that's going on, as best I can tell. There are some people that are in cense with the monetary fairness of this, but there's also a track of service, and since I have been here, that has been consistent. That has been consistent with the previous fire chief, previous police chief, current fire chief, current acting chief. It's been consistent. And I don't know how far back beyond that, I don't know, but it's been very consistent. And I'm not, again, you know, not to beat that dead horse, but I've never once had any of those people mention money. Not a one. They've never said, you know, that we should pay less, we should pay more. They don't, I don't think that's their concern. I think they're just interested in service. And that's been my focus.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
This is just coming from where I'm sitting at. When we, when this all started, it just seems that, from looking on the outside, that we really don't want to do this. I just, that's just what I hear. When we're sitting here and explaining things, I hear that, you know, there's no coming together or trying to solve anything. We have you negotiating, I guess, for us, but there isn't any true coming together and trying to resolve something. Clearly, we have issues, but no one has put a solution behind it, except to go to KSP. In turn, I have had a different experience. I've had people from both departments say, you know, I, we, I don't want to go. So, I don't know. I sat yesterday and listened to what everyone had to say, but I just don't hear us trying to solve anything. All I hear is that we're trying to figure out an amount, worrying about who's the directors, who the director's going to be, clear cut how we can get to KSP. And if that's the thing, I don't know why we're spinning our wheels. If what y'all want to do is go to KSP, why are y'all sitting here debating, you know, about this? I, if you're going, I mean, you, we put in, what was it, $22,000? We knew that wasn't going to work. $22,000? We knew that wasn't going to work. But we put that, and we go and meet them, and then we come back with this $144,000. So, I mean, what are we doing? What are we doing here?
One of the things that, and I should make this clear too, because at the appropriate time, if you go forward, I think that, and it's not, clearly, it's clearly not a bid. We're not putting this out to bid, although in theory, I guess you could. But one of the things, I think if you were to approve an amount higher than that $22,000, you would need to put in your, at least your discussion, something in the minutes about, I think, as justification to at least the citizens of Barstown, why you're paying more than the amount for the state police. Which, again, if you were asking me to justify it tonight, you'd say, local control, local responsiveness. We have people that we know, and we have a day-to-day interaction with, and that we can trust. But if you listen, what I'm saying is, is that we don't have responsiveness, we don't have control, we don't have a relationship. That's where my concern is. And can that change? Yes, I hope and pray that it does.
Well, I want to say is, the hope and prayer probably, you know, that we need a little bit more than that.
The hope and prayer is, yeah.
It just doesn't sound like we're trying to resolve anything. It just doesn't sound that way from many, many agreements. It doesn't sound like we are trying to resolve anything. I mean, we have, we say we have all these complaints. Well, okay, you have a complaint. Did you ask for a response? Did you get a response? What was the consequence of not having a response? And we just can't say, we're not dealing with the norm. So we can't say that, well, you know, it's assumed. Nothing is assumed here. So we have to have that in writing, and we must know, if someone makes a complaint, are they spinning their wheels? Are they just typing it up to be typing it up? What is the resolution? We have problems and issues, but we do not have a solution. The only solution I hear is KSP. So are we going to KSP or are we staying with the county? I just, we don't, I'm not hearing that.
With the complaints, we don't, we're not getting solutions. I can tell you that.
I just, right, and I just said that you cannot get a solution to something if you don't get a response. And a response, you have to set the parameter, and that hasn't been done. You can have standard operation procedures all you want, are you implementing them? That has to come from both sides. That's called negotiation. I cannot see how we can spend this much time on this. We just, I mean, do, it sounds like you guys want to go with KSP. From listening to you, I mean, everything's been, it hasn't been positive. It's been borderline negative, from everything I've heard tonight.
I've been in, in, I took it very seriously in my charge to try to work out something with the Nelson County Dispatch. My thought on this was, and is, that make it work. But it takes two to tango, and we can write in a bunch of stuff that requires them to do a bunch of stuff, and if they decide they're not going to do it, we're no better off than we are now. And I've tried, I've tried to, again, and I think it's unfortunate, I agree with you, I hear what you're saying, but it's unfortunate that we have to write an agreement that forces a partnership and resolution and responsiveness in a relationship. That should come naturally. There should be a mutual respect. And I don't, I don't get the sense that there's a mutual respect here. And again, the parties, you know, I'm privy to some of this sniping back and forth. I'm not sure that you could write in one, you know, if people just don't like each other, you're not going, it's not going to. And I'm talking about, you've read quotes from fiscal court, you've read quotes from the EMS director, you've read quotes from the dispatch director that are derogatory towards the city council of Barstown. And, I mean, fundamentally derogatory, not factually derogatory, well, they're not doing this and this and this, it's just, you know, and I wonder if it can work. That's where my frustration is. I just, I'm an optimist.
I think that, I think that we need to know if it's going to work. I mean, because the relationships are, they're torn right now. And the trust is not there on both sides. We just can't say that it's us or them. It's both people. It's both sides. And we need to look at it from both sides, and that's not what we're doing. We're talking about money. We haven't even talked about saving the lives. We're talking about money. So, I mean, this is important. I've had to use that service before, so I know how important this is.
Ms. Coop, let me, you know, I think everyone here, you've had to use it. Me and Bill have delivered it on several occasions, but, you know, when Councilman Lydian and Councilman Rollins said, "Well, you know, we haven't had complaints," so when we started going through the policy and procedures at the police department that was never used, but we're using it now in documentation of complaints, and we started filing these complaints that police officers have, they now, even though we are still paying 40% of that organization, and they make us file an open records request, and we are 40% of that corporation, so that's what we do. So now we've been, we've been filing this, and when, I have a high sheriff email my commander and me, and tell me, Debbie, let me know every time these assholes file a complaint. I want to know. That's not good. That's not good.
And Mayor, I understand that. I understand that, but it's both sides, once again. I mean, we, we're not, we're not.
Just supply the.
An angel as well.
Supply me the material and give me what I've asked, and you don't have to use that language toward me or my chief or my administration.
In reference to New Haven and Bloomfield, Roland Forbes, what have you, have you spoke with those mayors about the money that they're not paying? Because I, this is the second time I've heard that. Have you had any discussions with the mayor in Bloomfield, Rhonda Hagan, or the mayor in New Haven about how they came to that point of not paying, or if they would pay? I mean, has any of that come into play or talked about?
As it stands right now, we're only 40%, or maybe less. That is the dispatch board. That should be the director. And you have a, that should be the director that's doing it, or the head of the dispatch board. But how can you when the dispatch and the other people that sit on it, board are giving the free service? Who would ask about it? It is the board's, it is the board's responsibility to take that up, and they should step up. That is their job. I can't, I can't and will not micromanage that. Okay, can we move on, please? Yeah. Oh, okay, it's New Business Number 11 Agreement and Consent to Annexation on 70.526 acres in Slushco, which is the new, it's still already out there on Tom Ballard. Larry, you have the floor?
Well, we just got a, Tim worked with their lawyer, and we got an annexation agreement, so we can annex them. We need to get the mayor authorized to sign the agreement. That would accept the annexation agreement, that would give us the flexibility to annex a penalty.
And this is just standard of anybody that looks onto our sewer and water, and they want city services, it's standard, just like it was with the high schools, Thomas Nelson, Nelson Mini High School.
Fits the policy that the city's had in place since the 90s.
In that regard, Mayor, I make a motion that we allow the mayor to sign the Water and Sewer Service Agreement and Consent to Annexation Form Slushco.
Second, by Councilman Lydian. Discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Okay, motion's adopted. This will order M. 2016-14 Cemetery Monument Guidelines.
Do you all want me to read this?
Not necessarily. You don't have to.
Then I'll just.
Give a summary.
Don't have a summary for me. But all right, I can offer a summary. The cemetery committee met at a special meeting in order to address issues in regard to single monuments and their footers and their base and depth width in regard to sections throughout the Barstown Cemetery. We talked with several monument companies, and with their suggestions and regulations, we came up with guidelines that shall be applied when single monuments and double monuments, veteran markers and footstones are put in the Barstown Cemetery. In addition to the guidelines, suggested guidelines, there was also a suggestion in regard to the possibility that if the city of Barstown is required to move a monument and/or remove, remove a footer in order to allow a burial or accommodate a burial, that there be some issues and responsibilities by the owners for any labors and materials that are incurred. That's pretty much this unit's board. So the, please, yes, we need a, we need a recommendation.
Do I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, please. Okay. I make a motion that we approve when this will order M. 2016-14 as presented, and I yield the floor for a second.
Bobby's second. Discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Council, a member comments? Police body cameras?
I want to go last, please.
All right. Mayor, if I could.
Okay.
All mine are laid to police. First is on, have we posted the position for police chief?
No, we're still taking applications for it.
We posted it today on our, on the city website, which will be in next week's Courier-Journal. It's also in the Kentucky Chief of Police website.
Okay, are we going to advertise in Herald Leader? I think that's one of the things. Okay, so the Herald Leader, the Courier-Journal, KLC?
It's already on the KLC. It's already on the KLC site.
Okay, all right.
We do have a board that is set up that will do interviews that is separate from, uh, and, and from the administration or anybody. It is an independent board.
Yeah, I'm on it, boy. All right, uh, second question I have is on the status of Facebook. Uh, we previously had a Facebook account. It was taken down, and then we have a new one put up, and then it was deleted. Uh, the previous Facebook that we had, it was pretty popular, had about fourteen thousand likes. And I looked at the Louisville Metro Police Department today, and they had twenty-three thousand one hundred and sixty likes. And when you compare the size of Louisville Metro and the size of Bardstown, it looks like to me we had a pretty successful Facebook. So I'm just wondering why we don't have a Facebook account. It's, it's, it's a good way for us to promote our police department. A good positive way to promote our police department.
At the, uh, give you an example, it would be like, uh, I, you set your Facebook page up, Councilman Williams, and you let me run it. And so the past, uh, Facebook, the first Facebook page we had, uh, first of all, there was, there were no, uh, protocols set for Facebook policy and procedures. There were, there were none being used. Uh, we're in the process of setting that up, of which we have also looked at, uh, Facebook and, and, uh, policy and procedure for citywide.
All social media.
All social media. So on the first Facebook page, it, uh, we were not the administrators of it, and we felt that it was being manipulated outside our control. We had no control of it whatsoever. And that was by persons, a person's unknown. So, uh, we dissolved that, and that's what Facebook had said. And, and I think our IT guy said, just shut it down, it's being manipulated, so that's what we done by recommendation. We got another Facebook page. Facebook shut it down, thought it was, uh, a fake page, so they shut it down for us. So now we're working with our IT guys and with a social media policy for the police department, which is vitally important. And, uh, because it's nothing that has been done in the past, and as soon as we get that in place, we're gonna, we'll move forward and have another Facebook page. So it, it's coming, but we're gonna, we're doing things right.
All right, um, I've kinda noticed that, uh, we haven't, I haven't been able to, and I wanna pick on Nelson County Gazette, because it's pretty much a daily thing, but, I haven't been able to find very many stories on what's going on with the police department, and, you know, they're, they're online every day. And the standards were three times a week, so, and I realize there's some downtime on that, but, you know, our previous chief, uh, he had a good communication reputation, not only in our city, but within the region as well. And I feel like, uh, the police department is accountable to the community that we serve, and so, you know, we, I don't know, I guess what I'm asking here is, what is our relationship with the, the radio station, the, the media and so forth? It seems like it's, last couple, two, three weeks, it's been a little bit different.
Well, I'd be more than happy to go home with them and eat lunch or dinner with them anytime they would invite me, but I don't know if that's gonna happen. But the relationship is still the same. It is, it's, it's nothing changed from the last administration or the previous before that and before that. It's just that we are operating in a procedural manner that is not like any other that we've done before. We, Barbie is the open records guru, and, and she has put her foot down. And it's, it's been very relaxed in the past, and we're, we're just not gonna do that. It's, it's, it's changed. It's tough for people to accept, and I understand that, and I understand it's tough. But when you have open records policies and things that are given out, there are things that before they get it, he has to, the tack, the tack with-
Redact.
Redact, I'm sorry. Redact, and he has to look at it. And there are policies and procedures that, that, uh, that's been in place and new ones that are coming out. And it's just the way the world is now, and it's, uh, but the, the relationship hasn't changed. They can get anything they want, as long as they file open records requests. And if you look at Louisville, when they did their, uh, like Ms. Officer Shannon Hall for us, the information officer, all she can give you on, online as well, yeah, we had a shooting here at, uh, on the west end of Louisville, again, and that's it. They're not, they don't give any details. If you want details, you file open records request.
So Shannon Hall, Officer Hall is our media-
She is our media lady. She does the, she does the interviews. She does, uh, her and Jason Woodson are doing the Facebook. And we're, we're copying some of the policies and procedures from other departments.
So when we have a, something that happens in the community, we, no one from the police department gets in touch with the media to let them know what is taking place?
If they wanna know, they can call, and they'll, and they'll, they'll get in touch with Shannon Hall, and they're more than likely, they'll have to file an open records request.
Rollin', are you talking about the press releases that Rick used to send out or Tom used to send out? Well, we, we really did have to put, uh, we had to slow those down a little bit because of the information that was going out prior to the city attorney having an opportunity to look at things like that. And sometimes it's a little risky, and sometimes it, it was just everyday information. So it's-
Can I ask a question in reference to what you're talking about? How much training are we, are, are they going through training for, say, what Shannon's doing, Shannon Hall, um, information? Because, you know, it, this posed a lot of questions in reference to what, um, um, Councilman Williams is saying, because, you know, all of a sudden, we, we see a post online with information that wasn't supposed to be on there that we had never done in the history of Bardstown, but where, are they, is there a specific training? Is there somewhere where they go for training?
Ms. Hall, well, first of all, I'll get, I'll answer the three or four questions you asked. Because Ms. Hall has been to training. She's, I think she's even, uh, shadowed Louisville Metro Information Officer, and she's been trained. She is certified as a information officer, also as a, uh, negotiator, hostage negotiator. There's more training going on than there ever has been. So to let out, to go back and answer the other questions, that there was, there has been in the past information let out that shouldn't have been let out, so it's just not in, uh, this, uh, chief's term. It's, that's totally false. It goes way back before then, and before then, it was, information was let out. And Ms. Barbie Bryant has put her foot down, and we're gonna, and we can't do that.
Well, there, there's nothing wrong with open records requests. I mean, that's what we're supposed to do. Regardless if two reporters ask for the same thing or not, our job is to give it to them regardless if the same people ask for it. That's right. So there's nothing wrong with that, as long as we give it to them in an appropriate time.
I think, um, I think, uh, Ms. Bryant does that very well, and if she can't get it in time, she'll ask, she calls and asks for extension. Uh, she's very rehearsed in that, and trust me, you don't wanna challenge her on that.
Okay, I have one more question, but I wanna go back to a previous one. I meant to ask the question. The, uh, Chief McCovens retired in May, May thirty-first? Somewhere around there, is that correct? And it's about, is there some reason why we didn't post the, uh, position for chief until today?
Frank, hey, we've been, I've been tied up with, uh, thinking about dispatch, and, uh, we probably should have posted it earlier than this, yes.
I, I came by a couple times to see you, and you, you were gone Thursday, probably last week, and I was there today, and I couldn't find you.
But I can tell you, I put figures out with my contacts in the, in the higher echelon of Louisville Metro, Lexington, Owensboro, Bowling Green, uh, I've got one in Dayton, Ohio. I've put my figures out there for that, so it's just, uh, we've been, we're not sitting on our thumbs, we're just being busy.
Okay, and then, um, that's the last one is, I'm looking at the map back there. We, how are we patrolling the city now? Are we still doing it in beats, or are we doing it, how are we doing it?
No, uh, uh, they're, right now, they're doing it as it was when we were here, because what, what they were finding out, going through the history of the calls that they were taking, uh, because Rollin' Williams has a theft report, but, uh, there's priority calls over here. You may wait one or two hours before a theft report gets there. And I think that's wrong. For example, there was a lady that called and said there was, uh, a prowler, but it wasn't, put dispatch as a priority one. It was like a number three priority, which is a report taken. Uh, she waited almost an hour and a half. Of course, she wound up leaving after the guy left. So what he has gone back to, which I agree, is patrolling, and you go through, you go through a call list, so you have your, uh, six officers that are patrolling that night. They start up patrol officer one, whoever he is, and they go down and they, and they take their calls, and they go wherever.
No, I'm talking about, uh-
Yeah, the beats don't happen from the hell.
Okay, as they geographically move around the city. I'm not asking for times and places, was that a help, criminal? I'm not asking for that. So we have a rhyme and a reason for how our police-
They do not patrol a B district, A, B, or C. They go all over the city, everywhere. They drive everywhere, like Bill and I.
I think what he's asking, it's posted on the duty board each day or was, areas that are having problems like, um, drug activity, death deal, uh-
They now have-
Had several thefts out on McGowan. That's just, just, so what you wanna do, you're supposed to target these areas that you're starting to see an addict, and you try to work those areas. That's how we done it.
Uh, in, uh, Soundhead, they do have the sergeants over each squad. They do have a, uh, squad meeting, correct? Yeah, so you, you better be having. You have a squad meetings, and hopefully, they should be exchanging information. And his answer makes me wanna question if it's done, so I will check on that. But they're supposed to be, when a day shift goes from day shift to second shift, squad comes in, they should be exchanging information and targeting what areas. I do know from the nights that I've ridden, that they were having a problem like on Caldwell. And officers got out and walked through Caldwell, and, I mean, they, they target areas like that. Is that it?
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, let's move on.
Cemetery?
Cemetery D, uh, body cam.
Yeah.
Then she wanted to wait to the last.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Which one, you wanna wait to last?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, that's what she said, and wanted to wait to last. You got the number thirteen cemetery D's for, for Carol and Richard Davis. And, uh, I'll approve that by, if that's okay, by unanimous consent. Thank you, guys. And announcements, there will be a public hearing for property tax rate, uh, nine, six, two thousand sixteen, at four forty-five PM, city council chambers here. Uh, the working session will be held on Tuesday, September the sixth, at five PM here. And now we go to back to number twelve, police body cams.
Uh, okay, I, I did have a question for you, though. Um, recently, we had agreed to purchase three vehicles for the policemen, right? In our budget? All right, um, who, who are the vehicles for?
For the cars that were replaced. We got some cars that got a hundred thousand miles on them.
Right, but who, I mean, are those for the regular officers that are out on the street? Or what?
Those cars are taken offline. For example, we have officers that retired, and it was a light new car, and I think it has maybe sixty thousand, seventy thousand miles on it. But since there was no maintenance done to it, no updates to it, the car basically is not worth nothing, okay? So by having it estimated, and what it cost to fix it was like sixty-eight, sixty-nine hundred dollars, and the car is not worth that. That's how bad the car is. So anyway, as it has been in the beginning of time with the police department, as cars age, they rotate out, and they, and they have set up a program. I think when Bill and I was there, they set up their bone and bite tube. If you ever had to get in behind Booker Poe and you had to sit on a pillar to see over the steering wheel, you'll know how bad they are. So they rotate in and out. Now they got the three, and I think in, uh, just here, uh, in the last, uh, last chief, uh, he had, uh, four cars that were, uh, slated to be out, and I think in the budget, it was like two hundred thousand dollars.
So we purchased three, didn't we? We got three-
We purchased four.
No, but this, for this budget, right, so we got, we approved three, I thought.
We approved three, but you cut it fifty thousand dollars, and they still purchased four vehicles, and they still come in under about fifteen thousand dollars under the budget, even you all cutting it fifty thousand dollars.
So we got three Ford Explorers and one Tahoe?
No, they bought a, they bought a used car for a detective, and, uh, two Explorers and a Tahoe.
Two Explorers and a Tahoe. Thank you.
Now, on the Tahoe, if you wanna look at it, I'll explain that to you. On that Tahoe, if you go off the lot and buy it, it's probably sixty grand, okay? That vehicle is, is a double-purpose vehicle. Newcomes donated the van for the, uh, Flex Team. It's on its last leg and kinda beyond repairable, and it's not worth repairing, 'cause the, the cost outweighed what the vehicles were. Councilman Williams, you probably know that. You probably fixed a few in your, in your time, haven't you? So, this Tahoe, uh, was, was purchased in northern Indiana. It fell in under the budget of about thirty-eight thousand dollars. Well under the, uh, under that budget, the Ford Explorers interceptors are about thirty-nine thousand dollars apiece, and that's outfitted. We have saved, we have saved, uh, money by going to Allen Inn up there in Lebanon, by letting them wire the, the lights and the, and sign, and letting them do that, 'cause we don't, we don't have the repeat calls on the wiring now. So that vehicle was purchased, and it has a double-use warrant. It's a, uh, as much, uh, equipment that, uh, Chief McKenzie-Madamie has received for the Flex Team, which has all been pretty much free from the military. Uh, he's had tow trailers with his own vehicle. That vehicle is now gonna be used if it's needed. It's second, be gonna be used, uh, for the Flex Team, 'cause Brad Dillak has that, and he is a commander with the Flex Team, and it has Flex Team equipment in it that he carries, 'cause you can't predict where there may be an active shooter with as many high schools as we have. So it now carries the equipment. And it also has running boards on the side, where Flex Team members can ride there and ride a short where, they go to a state, place to stage, and then they ride to where they gotta be. So it is a dual-purpose vehicle.
So we got four vehicles plus a Tahoe? I'm just, we got four vehicles total?
And they still come in around fifteen thousand dollars under the budget. Actually, you all cut fifty thousand out of it. There's still fifteen thousand dollars under the budget.
Fifteen thousand.
So I think they're doing an excellent job with their money. They're not wasting it or just spending it because it's there. So with that, with that vehicle, it's, uh, it actually gets better gas models than these Chevrolet Caprice, which have a Corvette engine in them, and they, those cars probably got eight to ten miles to a gallon. We even get anywhere from, uh, whatever, if you believe the sticker, it says sixteen to twenty-three or something like that. Or eighteen to twenty-three, but probably won't make it. But they're still better than, they're still better than these Chevrolet Caprices. Okay? That answer that?
Yep.
Very good. Any further questions?
Yes. Um, I, I just wanted to ask this question. Um, a while ago, uh, we, uh, I guess you were taking applications or what have you for a police review board, um, something like the, um, panel that's going to hire or, um, review the, the new chief that will come in. What happened to that? Because you had asked people to submit applications, and then you scrapped it. Um-
I am not gonna have a civilian review board. It's not gonna happen. Not, not me. What I asked for is people to set on an independent board for a hiring process. That's what it was. It's not a civilian, it's not a review board. It is a board that is set up to, uh, do hiring for recruits.
Yes. Okay. Um, all right. Well, body cams.
I was able to speak with, um, the lieutenant last night in reference to the body cams. And next week will make 30 days, that, um, we would have that 30-day response. But honestly speaking, I don't think that we're going to be close to having any type of information, because, um, the information that they have, um, is far and few in between. So, um, honestly, he said that they were working on other things, and I respect that, that answer. Um, however, we, um, I, I, I do believe that there should be a committee, um, made up to help with the study for the body cams. Whoever those experts are, that, that's fine. But, um, I, I, I do believe that, um, that needs to be done. Um, the community is, once again, um, asking for those body cams. I, I think they feel that it, that may be a sense of, um, another layer of protection. But also, with the police officers, um, who also see that as a, a level of protection. Because surely, uh, we're not saying that our police officers are doing something wrong. But it, it saves them from complaints. You know, if they're out there in the field and someone says something that they did and, and they really didn't do it, that body cam is there and, and that can help them, um, alleviate from going through, you know, having a complaint in their record that's not justified. Um, so I was told that the models are obsolete. That was the information that was given. And that they were looking, um, at other devices. Um, I know that other police departments have that model and have, um, little problem with them. So if we are, um, getting rid of them, what are we going to do with them? If, if they're obsolete and we can't use them, and we pay 30-something thousand, you know, what, what's the backup plan there? You know? I mean, that, that's a lot of money. And, um, I, I just think that we should, um, look further into this. And why we need a committee is that, um, you need a SOP, a standard operation procedure, how to maintain those body cams. Um, you know, there, there's some questions of, you know, who we would, um, consult and, um, uh, how it would help the police officers, a better opportunity to, um, have in the field with the communication. And then transparency. We, we're going through a phase of, you know, integrity and, and transparency. And, and I know that I would feel better if they had a body cam on them. I know it's expensive, but it's just like the 911. You know, that's a life. You know, every time they step out that door, that's their, they risk their lives for our community. And at any given time, we don't know what's going to happen. But also, it's a protection for the resident in the community. And, and I, I would just like to know how each council member feels about these body cams. If they see it as a necessity or something that we, we, um, we don't need.
I'd be glad to speak up on that.
I, I think you'd be correct. I think we're about to have good quality. And if you're talking about 160 to 200,000 dollars a year for body cams to do what they need to do, that the big cities have, that you see on TV, sure, yeah. Where are we going to get the money? We've been sitting talking about money all night. State police don't have them yet. Hell, they've got deep pockets. They don't have them. Sheriff Department don't have them. Nobody else in this county's got them. But we're going to have to come up with that money. And if we make it an ordinance where you have to have it every year in the budget, then, you know, that's a big step. Yeah, sure, we'd like that. But if I had to take two between a body cam, because everybody's videotaping out there anyway. Every time I pull a confrontation, every time I had a confrontation, there's somebody with their cell phone recording me. Hell, they're putting recordings that's going to show up, I promise. You know? But I've got officers just buying their own patrol guns. We don't have no patrol rifles. We don't train for once a year on fire because we don't have the ammo. You know, there's a lot of things behind the scenes that y'all don't see, that these body cams were, like, really? I need a body cam when I'm out here in Barstown? And that much? Oh, no, no.
Well, now, see, I, you know-
Now, that's where the sheriff department needs body cams, and they've been involved three times, four shootings. We've, we've had three. They've had three shootings, no body cams. Why didn't they go to body cams? Why didn't they spend that kind of money? They're not going to. And we don't have the money to do it.
And I understand that. But that, that's the sentiment. You know, we're, we're Barstown, and it won't happen here. But that's not true. And that's, that's not what we should be-
You asked from a police officer, a patrolman's viewpoint, that's me. I, there are a lot of things out there, I'd rather have the body cam.
Well, I understand that, Bill. But you know what? I have asked a lot of police officers. And matter of fact, I've asked a lot of them if they worked. And I haven't heard the stories that you have heard. I have not heard what the mayor heard. Now, I don't know if anybody else is going to sit here and say anything, but I haven't heard it, and that's why I'm asking today.
Well, let me make a comment.
I mean, we have things that are being thrown out. We have things that are being said on the body cams. I mean, I just, why?
Well, I, I don't know which police, Barstown Police Department you're talking to. I've only known one. But I, there, and you don't, you know, there might be officers that do like them. I agree. Uh, with that, but let me tell you, uh, you can't expect us to do something in 69 days. I told you that I would give you a report in 30. Excuse me just a minute.
I haven't said it yet.
And, uh, I know. Want to. So I told you I'd give you a report in 30 days on where the study is. I didn't say it's going to have cameras in 30 days. Never said that, not one time. Where it took the other chief, over six months. And he placed a 9.2 or 9-point rating on these cameras? Well, let me tell you, Barstown City Department, Elek Department bought backup cameras from the same company in 2012 and 13. They lasted all but three months. Do you think they replaced them? No. Because why? Same problem that we have. Did we get a bad batch? I don't know. I'm not willing to spend another one red cent with that company to, to go in and buy more junk cameras. They were a problem in the very beginning, and he even states that. You know that. So I don't know which officers you're talking to, but when I get the information for these body cams, again, I will, you'll be the first to know. I'll let you know on the information.
I didn't say, um, 30 days you were going to bring back the, the cameras. I was expecting a-
So the last two of the weeks you asked every week?
Well, I have, because, uh, every week you should be closer to a, to a, a report. So I do ask, and it's my right to ask.
The other chief's six months.
It's my right to ask. And it, and it's one that you signed off on.
Well, you're going to get the same response next week when you ask for the camera.
It's one that you signed off on. And, and, and let me, let me speak, please, because you guys have had plenty of time to speak tonight. This is the same thing that we're talking about, just with 911. You, you go amongst yourself and make these decisions, and you don't have a, a clear-cut way of trying to get more information. No input from anyone, um, not reaching out to any other organizations, um, but then blame someone else for something that was done that you signed off on. And I think that's wrong. You wanted these cams just as much as anyone else. And the people want the cam, so they deserve an answer. Now, if, if you don't have it in four weeks, fine. I, I won't ask anymore. But what I'm saying is, you should be close to an answer about a report on the body cams, because that's what was stated in open session.
I'll have a report in 30 days.
Well, 30 days is coming up.
Let me make a comment. I'll support the body cam from day one, when Chief McCovens presented to the Capitol, and I'll support the body cam today. And I think we should continue on studying this issue, not just throwing away. I don't think they were junk. I think that, um, they did serve, and they were paid for themselves. And getting back to the sheriff department, I have a couple of sheriff's department friends in Buckman, and they did not indicate to me that they would not buy no body cams. They said they were going to wait a while. Wait a while. Sometime when something first come out, they got to get on the kink side of it. So they said they were going to wait a while. The possibility that they may purchase some, but they did not indicate that they would not buy it. Okay, I'll like correct you on that. Because I have some friends in the sheriff department.
Well, if, if, there's a couple of questions around there. In, in terms of the, uh, existing body cams, there's a surplus, um, equipment or surplus, uh, city property, uh, procedure that they have to dispose of those cams that they're going to get rid of. One thing that was done improperly last time, I think, and should be done properly this time, is, is that it should be put out to bid. It shouldn't be just, you know, all of a sudden, we have them one day. That's not, you got to have, you have to have a bid. And, um, I think what, I assume partly what Councilwoman Colton was talking about is developing, you know, the, the bid documentation for that, that they're, they're not, you know, in terms of the criteria. Um, and, um, I personally am a big supporter of the body cams, but the one thing I, we have to have is we have to have records management. We have to have the records management. Uh, Barstown's inundated with it right now. We have to be able to get it and redact it so that people's faces, little children's faces are, are blurred, uh, so that innocent bystanders, you know, so that somebody can't come in and make a request and get video of your, inside of your house. There's a lot of issues that go along with it, and it's, um, so it has to be done, I think, carefully.
And with that present, with that present system, you cannot do that. And it's, and it's vitally important that, uh, that we do and be able to have that, that type of system. And, you know, uh, I think, uh, in, uh, in the, the last chief, I think you said it took him six months. Well, you know, they take us six months. Because I'm not going to sit here and just bite the first camera that comes out and say, oh, well, this is it, and we're going to get it again. Can't do that. You're going to find a system.
You got to put it out for bid.
You got to put it out for bid, because it's going to be, it's going to be over 100, 150 grand, easy. So you're going to have to put it out for bid. You're going to have to, then you're, then you guys are going to figure out how you're going to pay for it.
Once again.
And somebody's got to evaluate it, too.
And, and that's understandable, but-
Somebody's got to evaluate the bids, which may be the committee you're talking about, too.
Yes. And, and have a standard of operations, um, the procedures. But also, it was, it will give transparency and also, um, show members of the community, the policing, um, that, um, our fine officers have. So, uh, I'm sure that, um, uh, with a lot of open record requests that have been going on and will continue to go on, um, you know, there, there are questions. There are questions. So, um, I, I just think that it's necessary, but that's my opinion.
I know, I was late. Just want to say that, uh, I, I support, you know, body cams. A lot of people in my family that were involved in law enforcement, and I spoke to them, and they supported it as well, and they gave the reasoning. But I, I hope you, pray you help them find something, because I think the first time you said it was 65,000. In the last meeting, I think you said 100. And then tonight, you said 150.
Yes.
Because they, you're, you're dealing with, what do you want on the camera system? I can go back and buy these, I can go back and buy these for 20, 30,000 dollars. But you're going to get exactly what you paid for. So you have different steps that you want. What do you want on it? Where do you want those to fit? Louisville City wears theirs on the rappel, and the camera points down to the ground. I would think that's viable. You can't fasten that. Now they've got them where they're on their glasses. Do you want all our officers to wear safety glasses? Is that an issue? I don't know. I mean, do you want storage? You want storage, and you store it on a CD? Or you want storage like we've been doing it, and you have a problem with the court system like you have now? Or do you want to store it in an iPad? Where the Commonwealth or the county attorney can have access to it if they buy the module for it? Then they get, they get access to it automatically. There's a lot of money. There's a lot of-
Yeah, and they're going to change custody issue, too, that we have to-
That's exactly right. We have written a policy that we don't have, that we're going to have, that we've never had before, but we're going to have.
Could I make a final comment so we can close this meeting? I would like to make a comment to Roland Williams. We have not had any figures in writing. So we assuming all of these things, and Barstown is numbers.
What's the writing?
Hold on a minute, I'm even versing. I was going to say something. We assume too many things. So we assuming it may be 150,000 or 100,000. Or we haven't saw, we haven't, we haven't had no prices, Roland, nothing in writing that we can review. So we don't know what to push over, they're going to cost.